Heather. Um, do we have other folks on Zoom?
We do not.
Council members? Okay, well, we've got, we've got a quorum, so. Hi Deputy Mayor Kevin Schilling, I'm calling the special meeting of the Burian City Council to order on September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, the time is four thirty, this hybrid meeting is being conducted in person at Burian City Hall and virtually via Zoom webinar. The clerk will announce the role and interpretation instructions, please.
Thank you. At this time, the city of Burian offers Spanish interpretation via Zoom, so if you would, for those attending on Zoom, um, select the language you would like to listen to this meeting in, in either English or Spanish. And on the next slide shows how to do so on your mobile app. And with that, we'll go into roll call. Mayor Sofia Aragon. Deputy Mayor Kevin Schilling.
Here.
Councilmember Hugo Garcia.
But isn't it?
Councilmember Jimmy Mata.
Present.
Councilmember Sydney Moore. Councilmember Sarah Moore. And Councilmember Stephanie Mora.
Present.
And it does look like Mayor Aragon is on Zoom at this time, and Councilmember Sarah just walked in as well.
Great, okay, perfect, thank you all very much. Uh, so we are gonna hop into our special meeting on interviewing the ten candidates for the Planning Commission to fill seven vacant, uh, spots. Um, we're gonna assign some questions that each council member will ask for each of the candidates. So Stephanie is gonna go with the first question, I'm gonna go with the second question, Hugo's gonna ask the third question. Sofia, can you ask the fourth question?
Mister Chair, can I ask if the questions be put up on the screen, please?
Yes. So question number one, that Stephanie will ask every candidate, why are you interested in serving on the Burian Planning Commission? Next question. I'm gonna ask what unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work on the Planning Commission, next question. Hugo's gonna ask, the role of Planning Commissioner involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month. Next question. Are you able to ask this question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Sarah, can you ask question five? Yes. The Planning Commission is helping to lead Burian's comprehensive plan, okay? And then I'll ask question six, too. All right. First up of our, here comes Councilmember Sydney Moore. Can we please include Councilmember Sydney Moore in the present list of council members? Which gives us a full council. Councilmember Moore, I know you're just walking in, but can you do question number six?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have our first candidate in the room or on Zoom?
Annie Phillips is on Zoom. So Annie, I will promote you now, you'll be rejoining in just a moment. Annie, you'll have to accept the panelist's invitation, please. And Annie, whenever you're ready to turn on your camera. Please do.
Hi Annie.
Hi Kevin, how are you?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, all looks well, we can see you, we can hear you, thank you for applying to the Planning Commission.
Well, thanks for you.
We are gonna get started with some questions, and our first question, each council member is gonna ask you a question, so please respond to each question, uh, the best you can. Um, we're gonna try to keep each interview to ten minutes, and so there are six questions. So a little over a minute for each question, does that sound okay?
Yeah, I'm gonna be real short on a couple of them and real long on others.
That works, all right. So we're gonna get started with, um, question number one.
Why are you interested in serving on the Burian Planning Commission?
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, I love Burian, I've lived here since two thousand and five. Uh, I think it's a unique community, and I want to protect its identity the way it is. And, uh, when improvements have to come, I want to be careful about how to guide them, and, uh, I would love to be part of that growth.
Okay, thank you, um, I'm your second question. What unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work on the Planning Commission? Please specifically address your experience in working collaboratively with others on policy-related matters.
Right. Um, I worked for fourteen years in the, the State Department of Ecology as an environmental outreach specialist. And, uh, I had to work with a lot of very interesting personalities there in water quality. Most of them were scientists, and I don't have much of a science background, I'm a communicator. And, uh, so that was very interesting to get them to listen to me because they didn't have a lot of respect for me at first. And, uh, to work with them, it was just very, very interesting, and I think I was successful, in fact. I, this isn't exactly relevant, but I, I created something that's still going on, and even our Science Learning Center down on the beaches is actually doing this annual event still every year, even though I retired in two thousand and three when it was originated. Um, it's called the World Water Monitoring Day. And, uh, there are now like seventy-five nations that are, um, participating in it, and on that day or close to that day, um, homeowners, associations, classrooms, students, and scientists go out and measure the water quality in their local watershed with, uh, already determined parameters and methods and report the data, and so we have a record of how water quality is improving or not and, uh, what's happening in that regard. And so I'm pretty proud of that. And that, that was, that required coordination with a lot of very interesting personalities from all kinds of agencies, including federal.
Thank you, Annie. Uh, question three, the role of Planning Commissioner involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month, reviewing materials from staff prior to meetings, and maintaining an understanding of relevant current legislation. If selected, would you be able to commit to this time obligation?
Thank you, yes, I would certainly have that time and be happy to do that.
Go ahead, Sophia.
Is there a particular set of planning, policy, economic development, livability, or civic issues or strategies that interest you most?
Yeah, thank you, Sophia, um, definitely. I'm very interested in, um, increasing affordable housing in Burian, but not at the expense of open spaces and, uh, mature trees and, um, the environment. I, I think that we must grow, um, but we must grow in, in a sensitive manner, and I'm very proud of our tree code that we just instituted. And, uh, I think that that is an example of the kind of, um, careful development that we can do in Burian. Um, I'm, I've been interested for a long time in residential development that, um, clusters homes so that there's open spaces left for people to enjoy and recreate in and relax in and wildlife and all those other good benefits from open spaces. And, uh, and yet to grow, we must grow because, um, the state of Washington just, we're growing like crazy, and if we don't grow smart, we're gonna be too expensive, we're gonna gentrify and look like Central Rainier Valley or West Seattle, God forbid. And, uh, this is what really interests me, the challenge of being able to increase density, but not, um, not harm the environment and not take away too much open space or mature trees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Thanks, thank you for applying. The Planning Commission is helping to lead Burian's comprehensive plan, vision, and strategies for how the city will grow and change in the coming twenty years. What aspect of the comprehensive plan do you envision as a priority for Burian in two thousand and forty-four?
Thank you, Sarah, um, yes, kind of what I was just saying, uh, we must grow, especially in, um, housing, affordable housing. But we mustn't start looking like one of those dense, gentrified areas in Seattle where nobody really wants to live. We must maintain the character of Burian and, um, and I think that that's, uh, exemplified in our logo with the tree and the, and, well, it's a mountain, I guess, but we have hills here, and it's, it's just a beautiful natural environment, and we must protect that.
Thank you.
Hi Annie, thanks for being with us and applying. Why is, why is it important for the Planning Commission to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion in its work? And how do you see yourself contributing to maintaining these core values in the work you do on the commission?
Yeah, well, I love the diversity in our community, and I think we should, um, protect it. Um, and I'm afraid that if, if we allow too much housing of, uh, a more expensive, um, kind of, uh, style and value, um, I'm afraid that we won't be able to maintain the diversity that we have in our community, we should protect that. Um, I, I think it's wonderful to have such variety, and we need to protect that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Annie.
Thank you, Kevin.
We are going on to our second interview now with Benjamin Schlemmer.
Hello? Thank you.
Hi, I'll go ahead and, um, ask the first question, why are you interested in serving on the Burian Planning Commission?
So I'm interested because I'd like to improve my community wherever I can. I'm already doing work with the Thirty Third Precinct and with Weed Warriors. So to be a member of the Planning Commission, I could fully utilize my passion for, uh, learning and utilizing knowledge to create a better path forward for Burian.
Thank you. What unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work of the Planning Commission? Please specifically address your experience in working collaboratively with others on policy-related matters.
Uh, for my skills for the commission, I believe that critical thinking and researching are why I can bring most to the commission. As I will dedicate myself to find solutions, whether it's a pioneering idea from Hawaii or a German standard. As for working collaboratively, uh, when I was a student at Razorback Aviation, I worked with my classmates to bring a project to the Port of Seattle on how to better preserve, um, water usage and to help recycle water quality through things like recycling the bottles that they ha- have people empty out whenever you're going for their TSA.
Thank you, Ben. Third question is, the role of the Planning Commission involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month, reviewing materials from staff prior to meetings, and maintaining an understanding of relevant current legislation. If selected, would you be able to commit to this time obligation?
Yes, I absolutely will be able to meet the time obligation. I already was attending planning commission meetings earlier this year, and I still have that time free to do so, as well as being happy to invest hours in reviewing material and legislation.
Thank you.
You're up, Sophia.
Is there a particular policy, sorry, is there a particular set of planning, policy, economic development, livability, or civic issues or strategies that interest you most?
So what interested, what interests me most are the issues of transportation, uh, different resources like electricity and water, agriculture, and the issue of poverty trap policies. With homelessness being in the forefront of everyone's minds, I believe that if we improve all of these factors, then we can help prevent more people from becoming homeless, so that we can also handle the current issue much easier.
Thank you.
Thank you for, uh, applying. The Planning Commission is helping to lead Burian's comprehensive plan, vision, and strategies for how the city will grow and change in the coming twenty years. What aspects of the comprehensive plan do you envision as a priority for Burian in two thousand and forty-four?
Well, housing is definitely the focus right now. I believe that a very possible danger could become the areas where affordable fresh foods are available for our growing population. Um, while I myself am fortunate enough to be in walking distance of several grocery stores, I know that large part of Burian isn't. And so going closer to two thousand and fifty with climate change already affecting the availability of fresh foods for some people, I believe that will have to become a new focus for us in the coming years.
Annie, thank you for being here, and thank you for applying. Why is it important for the Planning Commission to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion in its work? And how do you see yourself contributing to maintaining these core values in the work you do on the commission?
As a student of history, it's easy to trace the damage that has been done to marginalized communities through discriminatory laws that have happened in our past, and those effects still echo through to the modern day through the generations that has affected. Like, for example, in Alki, there's a plaque dedicated to the loss of the Japanese community there and their fishing industry. So I will dedicate myself to bringing forth ideas to raise the overall standard of living for everyone without sacrificing any marginalized communities and their living spaces to make room for new amenities and opportunities for them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, next up is Heidi Turner. Hi Heidi.
Hi.
We have some questions for you.
Great.
Hi, uh, why are you interested in serving on the Burian Planning Commission?
Um, I'm interested in being on the Burian Planning Commission because I really love the city of Burian. I moved to Burian about eighteen years ago, and I moved here because it was a great affordable place to live. And I also moved here because I love the downtown, I love the downtown core, I love the walkability, I love the parks, and more than anything, I really love the people. My neighbors have become great friends. I've gotten to know so many people through school, through church, through all the activities and soccer leagues and everything else that we've been involved with, um, over the last eighteen years. And I just love the city, and I wanna see the city really do some amazing things and keep that unique culture that drew me here eighteen years ago, and that really helped us define Burian as a great place to live.
Thank you. What unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work of Planning Commission? Please specifically address your experience in working collaboratively with others on policy-related matters.
Great, yeah. I have been involved in commercial real estate, real estate development, real estate consulting, creating great communities for more than twenty years. I have seen how different cities have grown, how that has grown to their detriment, or how that has grown um, to help the cities become better places to live. I have, uh, experience, uh, with community building. I've built and worked with different built environment communities over the last twenty years, and I've also have experience working with budgets, working with capital assessments, working with different planning pieces. And I've done a lot of different consulting with other cities and other nonprofit groups on how to make great communities and how to make people enjoy where they live, and how to make things successful for small business owners and for people, uh, that live in the community, and to help build affordable housing. And I've also got a passion for affordable housing, and I think that's something that's really important that we need to make Burians thrive in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Third question is, the role of the Planning Commissioner involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month, review materials from staff prior to meetings, and maintaining an understanding of relevant current legislation. If selected, would you be able to commit to this time obligation?
I would, uh, while I have a lot of things happening in life, but I am super excited about what's happening in Burian, and I wanna be part of Burian, and I will make a time to be part of, uh, what's happening in Burian and to, I'm used to having to go to meetings and be prepped for meetings, understand what's happening, and do research and analysis beforehand, that's what I do for a living, and I will be more than happy to do this now.
Is there a particular set of planning, policy, economic development, livability, or civic issues or strategies that interest you most?
Yeah, I think I'm most interested in two different things, but the most important thing is affordable housing. I think for us to understand how we can incorporate affordable housing into Burian and how we can do it in a multiple, multitude of different ways will help our city succeed the most. And so for me, understanding, uh, the affordable housing component, how we can do it in unique ways is what I'm most passionate about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the Planning Commission is helping to lead Burian's comprehensive plan, vision, and strategies for how the for how the city will grow and change in the coming twenty years. What aspects of the comprehensive plan do you envision as a priority for Burian in the year twenty tw- twenty forty-four? It's hard to even say that.
Yeah, exactly. Uh for me, it's about the economic development. It's about the economic development of our city, and it's about the economic development and keeping the core downtown unique and a special place. Having a walka- having walkability in our downtown and to see growth in a positive way, positive growth for our city to help build um tax base so we can have more affordable housing and that we can have strong businesses, strong homeowners, strong renters, strong everyone that lives in the city.
Hey there, thank you for being with us and for applying. Why is it important for the Planning Commission to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion in its work? And how do you see yourself contributing to maintaining these core values in the work you do on the commission?
Yeah, diversity, equity, and inclusion is essential to how we want to operate. Everyone uh deserves to be heard. Everyone deserves to have a say. And a lot of people have a difficult time uh understanding their place. I'm a woman in commercial real estate. If you know anything about commercial real estate, it is very male-dominated dominated industry, and it is difficult to have yourself heard, and it's difficult to have everyone understand um why. You might have a different viewpoint, and for me, having with opportunities and D E and I are so important and having uh having us measure success. So it's one thing to say it, it's another thing to do it, and having opportunities to measure success and having opportunities for us um to share share different viewpoints will only give us a better city. So for me, it's essential.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Heidi. Next up, we have Jessica Ivy.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi, thank you for being with us. Uh why were you interested in serving in the Burian Planning Commission?
I moved to Burian with my wife in two thousand nineteen, and I always wanted to get involved in our community. Um the pandemic put a little bit of a damper on that. Uh but seeing this opportunity come up, um I feel like it's a, it's a unique opportunity to um with a new planning commission to have some fresh eyes on the comprehensive plan. Um to be able to steer that into um implementation is really exciting. Um I think that there is a lot of opportunity for growth um with Burian um within business, but also within housing, and um so I think that, you know, given the affordability issues that we're seeing in Seattle, it's imminent. The growth is going to spill into suburban areas, and so being able to drive that and shape it um is is really exciting, and so um that's why I'm interested.
What unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work of the Planning Commission? Please specifically address your experience in working collaboratively with others on policy-related matters.
Um I have uh ten years of commercial architecture experience. Um I pivoted into marketing um after the recession, and so I also bring to the table um my experience with marketing, which, you know, community building is in my DNA. I I'm curious about people, about solving problems, and um I feel that my additional experience volunteering with um City of Seattle um Planning Committee uh when we were considering moving our building in Monreal in West Seattle, I know that was a long time ago, but um it was a, it was a um it was a moment in time where where we really had to um have a lot of hard discussions about um, you know, what that would mean for West Seattle. I also served on the Economic Development Committee for the West Seattle Chamber of Commerce, and I've been involved in design review boards for the City of Seattle um School District, um both with um playgrounds and with uh full remodels of schools. So um I have worked um as a team player um, and I, I um really enjoy working collaboratively with other people from various backgrounds.
The role of Planning Commissioner involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month, reviewing materials from staff prior to meetings, and maintaining an understanding of relevant current leg- legislation. If selected, would you be able to commit to this time obligation?
I, I can. I am available. I am um curious uh about uh the comprehensive plan, and um I know there's a lot more discussion to be had this, this fall and winter, and so I'm excited to do the research and uh bring that knowledge to the table.
Thank you.
Is there a particular set of planning policy, economic development, livability, or civic issues or strategies that interest you most?
I think that, you know, strategically, um for Burian to have an overarching guiding urban planning um vision is really important. I think um a lot of cities go through periods of interim growth, um and and sometimes that growth can feel disjointed, so having that vision to be able to um guide decisions, um you know, we've all seen we've all seen um development projects that are um, you know, building density for the sake of density. And I think it's important to be thoughtful and mindful about the um elements of of quality construction that um influence standard of living. If we're truly going to provide affordable housing to um, you know, in middle, middle housing within our community, it's thinking about um, you know, setbacks and sidewalks and landscaping. And and um my, it's my time.
No, go ahead, keep going.
Okay, um and and really being thoughtful so that you can have, you know, green spaces, spaces for families to exist and play um and not just, you know, building um um for the sake of building, so.
Thank you. Sarah.
Thank you. Uh the Planning Commission is helping to lead Burian's comprehensive plan, vision, and strategies for how the city will grow and change in the coming twenty years. What aspects of the comprehensive plan do you envision as a priority for Burian in twenty forty-four?
I, I think the region has a an affordability crisis, and I think that um addressing that through um middle housing and being able to imagine what that could look like in our community um is really important, and I think that um if we can develop creative, mindful ways um, you know, to rethink zoning and mixed use, um that's how we're going to grow sustainably. We have to start with this, the um, the residents of Burian being able to thrive um, you know, throughout um, you know, in I don't think it's, I think it's for everybody. I think that we really need to be a little bit more inclusive on um how we address that, that issue.
Hey, thank you for being here and thank you for applying. Why is it important for the Planning Commission to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion in its work? And how do you see yourself contributing to maintaining these core values in the work you do on the commission?
Well, I think if we're truly to walk the walk of being the welcoming Burian, we have to address um and and support policy that um it attends to racial, racial disparity in our community and provides opportunity, um economic opportunity, educational opportunity um for our marginalized communities. It's essential. It is, um you know, if we're talking about bringing, you know, a path to ownership, we have to be able to do, you know, initiate the programs, the um, the um incentives to be able to um enrich our, our community in ways where they can um um provide, provide um, you know, access to within that, within that pathway. It can't just be um, you know, that you're you know, the disparity, we need to even the disparity, I guess is what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor, if I may, just counsel. Uh just a reminder that uh we sometimes lose power in implement weather.
Right.
So if we are to lose power, uh just stay calm, emergency lights will come on, and hopefully the power will uh stay out for too long. Just wanted to share that reminder.
Thanks for the reminder. Okay, next up um is Jimmy Mata Junior.
Hi, thank you for being with us. I'm going to go ahead and ask the first question. Why are you interested in serving on the Burian Planning Commission?
Well, first and foremost, uh thank you for, for interviewing me today. You know, I grew up in Burian, alright? I've uh, I've gone through every emotion imaginable and a place that I call home, and so for me, when the city said, hey, we need planning commissioners, uh I said, hey, you know what? This is a good opportunity, opportunity for me to get back to my community. The other part of it is, you know, I'm excited about engaging and and um educating the community about what the plan is, what the vision is for Burian. Because there's no, there's no question, Burian's going to continue to grow. Uh and we need to make sure that it's smart growth, right? And so I think that being able to be part of this planning commission is, is a way to, to help my community, but also make sure that the uh planning aligns with the, the citizens of Burian.
What unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work of the Planning Commission? Please specifically address your experience in working collaboratively with others on policy-related matters.
Yeah, so I'd like to say that, you know, I'm very appreciative. I uh, I'm a delegate and the vice president of the carpenters union, so I want to thank you, thank all the carpenters that came and backed me up today. But, you know, we prioritize teamwork and unity. We effectively bridge diverse opinions and foster a culture of collaboration among all union workers. And so in doing that, I've been able to uh hone in my communication skills to maintain trans- maintain transparency and inclusivity uh to make sure that all voices are heard. So that, that's what I would bring. That's the, that's the attitude that I would bring to the Planning Commission.
The role of the Planning Commission involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month, reviewing materials from staff prior to meetings, and maintaining an understanding of the relevant current legislation. If selected, would you be able to commit to this time obligation?
Yes, and to kind of add on to that, right? You know, my parents told me, go to school and don't get into debt, and I told them that's an oxymoron because, you know, it's, it's hard to in nowadays, and so for me, um you know, I stand here today being a, a journeyman carpenter and having a master's degree and because it shows that I'm dedicated to whatever I put my mind to, and, and I believe that leadership requires accountability, uh and I have a proven track record that I take leadership very seriously. Um and I understand that leadership isn't for everyone, but I could tell you today that I'm fully committed to being part of this and taking the role seriously.
Thank you.
Is there a particular set of planning policy, economic development, livability, or civic issues or strategies that interest you most?
Nothing in particular, but I will say this. When it comes to economic development, we have to protect small business, and ultimately, we have to ensure that we have good-paying jobs, wages, and benefits.
Thank you.
Thank you for uh being here tonight. The Planning Commission is helping to lead Burian's comprehensive plan, the vision and strategies for how the city will grow and change in the coming twenty years. What aspects of the comprehensive plan do you envision as a priority for Burian in the year twenty forty-four?
So we need money, right? We need sixty-seven million dollars, and the financing largely depends on voter approval. And so what does that mean? Well, that means that we need community buy-in, and we need to make sure that the community understands, you know, the tangible impacts and benefits. So looking into twenty forty-four, what do we need? The top priority is comprehensive community education. Um because ultimately, at the end of the day, we need to ensure that the financing is there so that we can implement the plan.
Hey, thank you for being here and thanks for applying. Why is it important for the Planning Commission to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion in its work? And how do you see yourself contributing to maintaining these core values in the work you do on the commission?
So like I said, you know, we need, we need to make sure that voters, the residents of Burian uh finance these, these plans that we have. And so when we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, that's just not one group of people. That's everybody. And so for me, uh I speak Spanish, so I have the ability, not necessarily to talk to everybody, but I have access to individuals that speak Spanish, because at the end of the day, uh when we talk about building something for the community, we talk about everybody. And so that's been able to give me the insight of being curious. I grew up with a lot of individuals from diverse backgrounds, and so that's made me curious. And so when you're on the Planning Commission, you have to be curious. You have to be curious on how it's going to impact people, how people are going to perceive it. And so that, that's what I would bring to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, council, that was our first slate of uh interviewers. Uh we have a second slate uh in a little while. Um we're, we're kind of ahead of schedule, which is rare um uh any for any of us anytime. Um but I'll just say, let's take a break until our next slate of uh candidates come in, five thirty. I always shave at the beginning of fall. I always shave at the beginning of fall.
Uh, I'm just gonna officially say we're back here at 5:30, but we're gonna actually come back at 5:40. Okay, well, we're all here and Josh is online. It is 5:37, so I'm reconvening the Planning Commission interviews. Let's do the same lineup of questioning. Uh, so our first interviewee for our next slate of Planning Commission candidates is Joshua Halpin. We have Josh online.
Hey, Josh, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. How are you?
Good. I'm gonna go ahead and get started with the first question. Why are you interested in serving on the Burian Planning Commission?
Um, it's a serving on the BDP was a very interesting and rewarding way to apply my background and education to serve the community. Um, I really, really miss it, and um, I feel like the Planning Commission uh would be a wonderful place for me to continue my, my uh, you know, contributing to the community.
Thank you. Uh, this is a good segue then for what you just said, but what unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work of the Planning Commission? Please specifically address your experience in working collaboratively with others on policy-related matters.
Um, well, I bring a master's degree in public administration, uh, six years on the uh, Burian Economic Development Partnership. Um, I have very good relationships, or as I think I do, with city staff and council members. Um, I also have warm relationships within the downtown business community. Um, oh, about 10 years ago, about the first time I met Mayor Aragon, I was uh, working as uh, in the legislature, uh, doing professional advocacy, uh, working with electeds, committee staff, agencies, and industry stakeholders. Uh, some of my clients included, uh, the Washington Immigration Assistance Association, the Washington Residential Care Council, now, I, I don't know what they are, but they represent, uh, adult family home operators. Um, and the Northwest Yacht Brokers Association, uh, you gotta thank Gilligan and the skipper, not, um, uh, Thurston Lovey. I'm also a registered licensed real estate agent, uh, with six years development as a residential property manager. I have literally leased hundreds of rental units for individuals and corporate providers. Um, I can get even more specific if you'd like, um, but that sums up my, 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 my policy background.
Third question is the role of Planning Commission involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month, reviewing materials from staff prior to meetings, and maintaining an understanding of relevant current legislation. If selected, would you be able to commit to this time obligation?
Absolutely. Uh, I think I have one unexcused absence as a member of the BDP. Um, I follow city politics very closely, and I attend, um, uh, meetings and sometimes comment. Um, pretty, pretty religiously, uh, the time commitment is really no problem at all.
Thank you.
Is there a particular set of planning, policy, economic development, livability, or civic issues or strategies that interest you most?
Um, right now, the impacts of the 509 extension are, are looming, uh, big in my mind. Um, I don't know where that sits in, in the priorities for the Planning Commission, but I, I think it's gonna be a big impact on the community. Um, enhancing downtown and general urban renewal, uh, attracting investment to Burian. Public safety is very important to me, housing, uh, consistent with, with my background in, in rentals and, and real estate. Uh, you know, we gotta come up with 5,180 new dwelling units in, in the, uh, in the city, uh, to remain compliant with the plan. That is a big lift even over 20 years, so, um, I, that is a lot of wood to chop. I'd love to, uh, apply myself to, to, to helping to make that happen. Um, balancing the budgets, um, is, uh, and, and along with capital improvements and sustainable budgeting is, is very, um, important to me. Um, you know, we're, we're in a deficit right now, as far as I understand. Um, and, and, uh, I would describe our, our tax base as, as quite fragile, uh, compared to our neighbors. Um, I'm also a big fan of parks. Burian has fantastic parks and programming in, in our parks, and I, and I'd like, I think the Planning Commission can help to enhance that, um, and, and make Burian a, a more livable and, um, a, uh, more burdened sort of place.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is helping to lead Burian's comprehensive plan, vision, and strategies for how the city will grow and change in the coming 20 years. What aspects of the comprehensive plan do you envision as a priority for Burian in 2044?
This one was a little confusing for me. Am I, am I looking at myself in 2044? Looking forward 20 years, or are we looking between now and 2044?
You're, you're looking at what the comprehensive plan, um, will do to shape how Burian looks in 2044, would be my interpretation of it.
Okay. Um, I, I, I think that the, the, the housing piece will be the, the biggest impact between now and, and, and 2044. Um, I would love to see the, um, our downtown connected to the light rail. Um, that would be something that would be, I think, great for, for the city. I'd love to see our multi-housing, um, our multifamily housing stock, uh, redeveloped while still being affordable. Um, I'd love to see, um, Burian's commercial spaces, uh, remain competitive, and also, like, I think something that, that, that is under discussed is viral, uh, resilience. Like, you know, the next pandemic where we're stuck in our houses again, um, having a, a, being able to, our restaurants and, and shops to be able to kind of go in, into a mode, uh, where they can survive, uh, even though they don't have the, the, uh, people walking in front of them. Um, I, I, I think it's something that, that, that should be discussed and, and, and planned for. Um, Burian has a wonderful tree canopy. It, it, it's really, uh, one of the greatest things about it, um, about the city, and, and I'd love to preserve it while also renewing, because big old trees drop limbs and, and cause all kinds of, of problems. Um, but they're beautiful and they're huge carbon sinks. Um, and, and there, there just needs to be a way to, to make sure that the, the old ones that are close to death go and, and, but, but the ones that are, are, are big and healthy stay. Um, and, and having a, a healthy budget over, over this time, time span is, is very important.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for joining us and thank you for applying. Why is it important for the Planning Commission to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion in its work? And how do you see yourself contributing to maintaining these core values in the work you do on the commission?
Well, traditionally, the poor and people of color have not had the opportunity to participate on commissions like this one. I'm, I'm neither of those things, and, and I 100% acknowledge that. Uh, I, however, I am committed to interculturalism, inclusion, listening, compromise, and seeking win-win outcomes. Um, I also venerate the, the democratic process and, and how committees work to, to, you know, kind of work through problems. Um, and, uh, I'm, I'm a good sport about losing votes. I, I, I think I was a big proponent of, of, uh, adopting a lot of, uh, parliamentary procedure while on the BDP. I, I think my, my batting average on, on votes was in the, probably the low 200s. Um, I lost a lot. I'm a good sport about it and, and the, uh, uh, and, um, majority rules, and, and, uh, that, that's something that is very important to me. And, and also maintaining a, uh, a, um, a solid front on that is, is important. So, um, well, personally, I'm, I'm not gonna, I, I am, I am, uh, yeah, I am who I am. Uh, I bring the background that, that I bring, but, uh, as far as individuals who maybe bring something else, um, I, I will lift them up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. It's Paul Croon here. Hi, Paul. Uh, the table's sitting down here. You press the button on the right. Oh, can you press the button on the right? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah. All right. All right. So we're gonna go through, and each of us will ask you a question, starting with Councilmember Mora.
Hi, thank you so much for being here.
Sure.
Why are you interested in serving in the Burian Planning Commission?
Well, to help guide Burian to a, a more promising future, which it deserves. Operative word is guide, you know? I'm not gonna lead. I'll just, I mean, I'll just help push it along.
What unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work of the Planning Commission? Please specifically address your experience in working collaboratively with others on policy-related matters.
Well, uh, back in Tacoma, I grew up in South Tacoma. Uh, I was the executive board member of Tacoma Model Cities Program, uh, when I was 17. Uh, so I was elected by my peers to be, to be, represent a young voice on that, uh, federal program. Uh, I've been teaching for approximately 27, 28 years at the college/university level. So I have to address the diversity of our students, uh, Seattle Central Community College. Most diverse student, uh, colleges in, uh, in the West Coast. And I've served on tenure review committees, search committees, uh, uh, safety, uh, committees. Also in South Tacoma, I was, uh, on the board of the, um, Safety Committee for the South End. So, uh, oh, one more. I'm currently a scorer for the Foster School of Business for the WSA Writing Skills Assessment Test, which is very important. It's worth, uh, 33% of any applicant's ability to get a invitation to Foster. And, uh, it was quite contentious, uh, many times when we argue over who gets what score. Uh, but I've been doing that for six years. In fact, I start, first batch comes in this weekend, so. Uh, and, and the scoring committee, uh, the Foster School, uh, it's, I could say, can be very important if that student gets that passing four score. And many of the applicants are, uh, Asian or minorities. So we always, we always discuss, are we being, are we racist? Are we, is our category racist, you know? So we always have to struggle with that, make sure we're not perpetuating stereotypes, but we have to do our best to try to get people in.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
All right.
Yeah, thank you. The role of the Planning Commissioner involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month, reviewing materials from staff prior to meetings, and maintaining an understanding of relevant current legislation, which you've just kind of expressed and covered. But if selected, would you be able to commit to this obligation?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilmember, uh, Garcia, no problem.
Thank you.
Because right now I teach Tuesday, Thursdays, uh, go to Seattle. Otherwise, I'm just like hop, skip, and a jump away, so. And, um, you know.
Okay. Is there a particular set of planning, policy, economic development, livability, or civic issues or strategies that interest you most?
Uh, that I'm int- that I'm interested in? Uh, I like the, the beer. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just saying yes.
Yes, uh, the livability really interests me and the design elements, because I'm really interested in creating a, uh, helping create a pedestrian-friendly, uh, downtown, uh, incorporating small business, quality small businesses, uh, throughout. So I'm interested probably more in the livability than any others. I have a background in business too. I was, uh, at the University of Washington. I was, took many classes, micro, macroeconomics, uh, finance, uh, business law. And, uh, so I'm also, and I was a real estate agent for about 15 years, so. So I'm always interested in growth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. As one, we're, it's looking at your lips.
I'm I'm next. The planning commission is helping to lead Burien's comprehensive plan, vision, and strategies for how the city will grow and change in the coming 20 years.
Right.
What aspects of the comprehensive plan do you envision as a priority for Burien in the year 2044?
Well, Sarah, I I covered some of those points, but I looked at the background. It must have been very contentious going over decades to come up with that that plan. I don't want, need to know the history, but I'm glad it but it started in 2021. Now they're, they've finally agreed upon the the bullet points. So again, sustainability. And and there, no, there's no mention of maintaining quality schools, but I'm sure that's part of the livability, sustainability. Because I'm really impressed with the schools we do have, especially the schools for special needs students. That's really impressive because I know people who've come to Burien for their special needs son or daughter, so where they couldn't get good service elsewhere. So I think schools are an important part of making sure we always have clean, well-maintained computer technol- technology throughout all our schools. But yes, again, going to that downtown core, make it pedestrian-friendly so people can just walk and see their friends, their neighbors, and and spend money and and enjoy good, like Bakery Nouveau. I mean, that's when I first came and I go, what? There's a Bakery Nouveau here? I was very impressed because and then stops shops like that. I know we don't necessarily need a Starbucks, but, you know, nice coffee shops are always nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for joining us and thank you for applying.
Thank you, Sydney.
Why is it important for the planning commission to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion in its work? And how do you see yourself contributing to maintaining these core values in the work you do on the commission?
Okay, good question. Well, equity is the law. And equity has value also. So it's the law. We don't want, we don't want to pay money out by being sued, but it's the right thing to do is to always be aware of not infringing on anybody's rights. That's very important. So and as a person of color, I I I know I experienced microaggressions all the time just recently at Costco gas station, you know. Of all people, Japanese-American lady turned Karen on me, so. My mother's Japanese, you know, so I said, well, you know, it can happen to anybody. So I believe that we have to always protect individual rights, going back to the First Amendment. You know, I regularly incorporate the Bill of Rights, 13, 14, 15th Amendment into my teaching plan. I've been doing that for these 10 years. So always go back to that First Amendment, even though I have students who come from China. But they have to be very careful what they say. But I say, well, this is what makes United States, America, so great and foundational. Even though when you go back to China, which they will, the law go back, they said, you still just have to be aware of these core values. And maybe you can bring them into your your work just a little without, you know, I'm not, I don't want to see a GoFundMe on getting you out of prison. But and once I was at University of Washington, I was part of the Black Student Union. And I remember a city councilperson, he's running for office, and we shut down University of Washington hospital. It was just under construction. We went and we actually shut it down because they didn't have any minorities. So here we are. We just walked in and Mike had a bullhorn and we shut it down, Matt. So, I mean, I'm I'm, I haven't been on the highway yet, the freeway. I haven't, I have not been on the freeway, but, you know.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah, thanks so much. Thank you. Okay, Paul Ghul. Button's still on, it looks like. Heather Paul.
Hi, thank you so much for joining us. Why are you interested in serving on the Burien Planning Commission?
Well, I have the time now, and it just seems like everything is going on. It kind of need to step up my civic duty and contribute more to the Burien and and its future. And I kind of want to see Burien continue to grow in a sort of equitable and sustainable way. And it just seemed like a good opportunity when there was suddenly a lot of openings available that kind of prompted me, okay, there seems to be this need now. Maybe it's time for me to step up and and spend some additional time of mine to help, you know, do a little I can to help guide the the growth of Burien and make it a place that we all want to live in in the future.
What unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work of the planning commission? Please specifically address your experience in working collaboratively with others on policy-related matters.
Well, because my sort of background is sort of computer and analysis. So I've got a very sort of analytical brain of looking at data and sorting out details. You know, I did like spend one summer, I took a leave of absence, and a lot of it was spent going through a big, huge mess of Forest Service DIS to to help prepare the majority of the the comments for the Sierra Club in response to some Forest Service activity. I, you know, I tend to approach things in a pretty logical, rational way. Try to make decisions based on on facts and, you know, objective reality and not, you know, not too much emotion. I have been on a lot of of boards of environmental groups and recreation groups. I'm involved with the little, this little People for Climate Action Group here in Burien, helping to guide us to to have a more, you know, climate-oriented, carbon-reducing kind of policies within Burien. So some of us were helping the city's latest climate action plan. So I've been involved a little bit of stuff, and it seems like now I I really need to do some more. So I I say, I've got quite a bit of stuff that I think would would fit well and being able to collaborate with other members on the team to help advise the city and the council on kind of our future planning activities for for growth.
Thank you, Paul. Third question is, the role of the planning commissioner involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month, reviewing materials from staff prior to meetings, and maintaining an understanding of relevant current legislation. If selected, would you be able to commit to this time obligation?
Oh, I think I definitely could could do that. In fact, as soon as I, you know, assuming I get on air, if I get on this, that was the next thing I was gonna do was start taking a look through that, the whole concrete as a plan. I did do a quick summary, kind of scanned through it, and the summary was 20, 30 pages. So I said, all right, I'm not gonna invest a lot of time until it looks like it's actually going to be worth my while and I can then can begin to understand, you know, what it involves in detail and what kinds of projects or what kind of things we'd be looking at.
Thank you.
Is there a particular set of planning, policy, economic development, livability, or civic issues or strategies that interest you most?
Well, I think to some degree, I I think I'm aware that the our commitment to the county is to provide something like 16,000, you know, housing units somewhere in the next, I don't know, 10, 20 years. I can't remember the exact timeframe. And I think my thing is, is to make sure that we have adequate housing, which I would call workforce housing for for teachers and hospitality and the people that are working in the grocery stores and who cut your hair so that the people who are working here have an ability to stay here in proximity and and be able to raise their families and and feel like this is their community. They're just not coming in here as a kind of a remote worker. So I kind of think is just make sure we have a a good center core with adequate housing for a variety of income levels. But I think my thing would be largely this workforce housing because I already, I'm getting wind that things in Seattle are pushing prices down, and this is now, Burien is becoming a bit more unaffordable for a large swath of, you know, of working families. And we really need to sort of gear on that so that we continue to have, you know, affordable housing for people. Because I, I guess, I guess one other thing I'd forgotten about is that I think seniors, especially on fixed incomes, I've seen, you know, videos and stories of, you know, California where you've got seniors homeless on the streets and and walkers and wheelchairs because they've been priced out of their their apartments because their social security income isn't enough to cover the increasing rent. So that might be a thing is I want to kind of make sure that we have affordable housing for people that are on fixed income so we don't increase the homeless population due to them just being priced out of their place. So that's, yeah, there's several things, but that's kind of, and again, make sure that we develop the housing and we accommodate the climate-related things and carbon that we're building, green buildings that have as minimal amount of of carbon input, output, and, you know, as many heat pump kind of units as we can develop. And then I think, again, climate-related stuff is, I've always pushed that we need to make sure we have fixed severe weather shelters that aren't kind of volunteer-based. Or I see emails, oh, we're gonna need more people to do this, we, but it's, we need to really have a fixed structure in place as we get more extreme weather over the next 20 years that we've got something in place or from a living perspective that people can go to when we have severe heat and severe cold.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. The planning commission is helping to lead Burien's comprehensive plan, vision, and strategies for how the city will grow and change in the coming 20 years. What aspects of the comprehensive plan do you envision as a priority for Burien in 2044?
I, again, I think the the portable housing, probably linked in with the good transportation network, making sure that we've got, you know, adequate parks and public spaces, that we have a, I think, a dynamic arts area. That's one thing is I'm going to be pushing it from a different direction is we have a performing arts center where people can, you know, have concerts and dance performances and music and 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 plays that would help drive some economics that people would actually be a place to come because the analysis is that we're kind of in South King County and beyond. We're we're kind of a desert for for performing locations for people to do stuff. So I know we have a lot of, you know, we see some of these dance groups at the Fourth of July Parade and and stuff, and they're really fun to look like it, but they don't really have any affordable place where they can go to be able to, you know, do their thing with an actual audience and a nice, you know, nice performing venue. And I think that'd be a good opportunity for some of our various ethnic groups that have all these little things they're rehearsing all the time and do all this fancy stuff to be able to have them actually, you know, people go and actually see them. So that will be a thing I'll be keeping an eye out for is opportunities to push for some kind of a performing arts venue as part of the overall plan to help, again, make this a real, you know, a livable, great city to be in.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for being here and thank you for applying. Why is it important for the planning commission to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion in its work? And how do you see yourself contributing to maintaining these core values in the work you do on the commission?
Well, I certainly recognize that Burien is a very diverse community with also a lot of voices and and interests and backgrounds. And I certainly believe that, you know, every person has worth and dignity. And I certainly have always tried to treat people with, you know, with compassion and dignity that, you know, that everybody needs regardless of what they look like or regardless of the politics are. So I I think, again, as a commission to recognize we have a diverse community that we make sure that we consider all perspectives and all voices and that we're gonna target some area, we want to make sure that we go out there and actually, you know, talk to those people who may be either positively or negatively impacted to make sure we understand that we know what we're doing and that we don't make assumptions, you know, based on, you know, some things that we, we need to make sure we know what we're doing and that we hear from all voices and obviously be helpful to have as many, you know, a diverse population within the commission itself. But that being, if that isn't necessarily a deal, that means that just is more coming to must to make sure that we're we're not in some little tunnel that we are actually are considering other parts of 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 Burien when we are thinking about development activities and kinds of things that people may want. So again, I think we just need to keep our eyes open and make sure that everybody is treated equally and has an equal opportunity to participate in whatever types of opportunities we're making available in Burien.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next up is Sam.
Howdy. Hello.
Hi, thank you so much for joining us. Why are you interested in serving in the Burien Planning Commission?
So I've lived in Burien for nine years, and I've wanted to do more to serve the community. And I see this as a really interesting way to do that.
What unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work of the planning commission? Please specifically address your experience in working collaboratively with others on policy-related matters.
Okay, so I have a bachelor's degree in economics. I do a lot of data analytics for work. I was on Student Government Council in college. And I've been doing a lot of volunteering in Burien. Experience-wise, I grew up living in a lot of different cultures around the world. And I think that perspective might bring something to the planning commission, including Europe and Africa and Canada.
The role of the planning commissioner involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month, reviewing materials from staff prior to meetings, and maintaining an understanding of relevant current legislation. If selected, would you be able to commit to this time obligation?
I don't see any issue of being able to commit to that obligation.
Thank you.
Is there a particular set of planning, policy, economic development, livability, or civic issues or strategies that interest you most?
So I am very interested in increasing density in Burien. I think that from an economic perspective, yours is going to supply and demand. And I think if we can increase the density, we'll solve a lot of our housing problems. I also really like the livability concept and things like greenways and sidewalks and providing the ability for people to walk throughout all the neighborhoods and from the neighborhoods to the downtown core.
Thank you.
Thank you. The planning commission is helping to lead Burien's comprehensive plan, vision, and strategies for how the city will grow and change in the coming 20 years. What aspects of the comprehensive plan do you envision as a priority for Burien in the year 2044?
Walkable neighborhoods, to me, is probably one of the biggest things, along with increasing density. I know I already covered that in the last question, but.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and thank you for applying. Why is it important for the planning commission to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion in its work? And how do you see yourself contributing to maintaining these core values in the work you do on the commission?
Good question. I think, well, Burien is obviously a very multicultural city. And I think something that people haven't been talking about is that the diversity here in this context has more to do with socioeconomic diversity. And I think the way to solve that is on the planning commission would be to ensure that all of the neighborhoods are represented in planning decisions. And if there are things that are maybe a a negative thing for a neighborhood that we spread that around to all the neighborhoods, not just certain neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stelly. You are up. We're a few minutes before you are up, so thanks for coming in.
Yes, thank you. For the heads up. Hello.
Hello.
Hi, thank you for joining us tonight. Why are you interested in serving in the Burien Planning Commission?
For the past, I would say, over a decade, I've been thinking about both planning and economic development in Burien. And I don't know if it's sort of behind the scenes or just also collaboratively working on what it would take to create a city that is accessible for all, whether that's through transportation or accessibility of food and food deserts, affordable housing, missing middle housing. And just the way the city works, I'm sort of a policy nerd, and I do a lot of reading on my own. And the Planning Commission is just another way to serve Burian, the city that I've spent a lot of time and dedication to and living here, want to make it a better place.
What unique skills and relevant experience would you bring to the work of Planning Commission? Please specifically address your experience in working collaboratively with others on policy related matters.
So let's see, as far as commissions are concerned, I, and not that that was the direct question that you asked, but I served on the Burian Arts Commission in the 2010s for a while, working on starting the Burian, be the B town beat. And also starting the process for the an arts district, an arts and culture district, and now what's become the creative district. My collaborative efforts have been most visible through my work on the creative district, which was, well, we were approved this last December. And there's a lot of planning and economic development in relation to creating that. I created, I think in 2013, the map that is actually the outline of the downtown creative district right now. Thinking about all the parts and pieces and, and what it takes to work in a group to collaborate, different points of view, coming together and getting over differences and finding common ground. I think I answered that.
The role of the Planning Commissioner involves a level of time commitment that includes meetings twice per month, reviewing materials from staff prior to meetings and maintaining an understanding of relevant current legislation. If selected, would you be able to commit to this obligation?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think I've shown that I've already been able to commit to obligations having to do with multiple meetings per month and to cities. And I am quite familiar with the comprehensive plan and what's going to be considered moving forward already because once again, yeah, I like that sort of stuff.
Is there a particular set of planning, policy, economic development, livability or civic issues or strategies that interest you most?
There are so many. There isn't just one issue. And, and there isn't just one strategy. I feel like in order to have a holistically healthy city, all parts and pieces need to be taken into consideration. Like I said at the very beginning, I, I didn't say it in these words, but I see the city as a whole. And so equity in, in transportation, equity in access to food and necessities, in ability to find housing, but also in, in the sense of space for healthy business growth and all the things that, including economic development, which is always hand in hand with planning in order to bring enough money in so that we have money for projects that fit under planning. And I, I think, I think that, that it, there isn't one specific issue. It's, it's the city as a, as a whole and holistically and how to plan forward based on the visions that have already been crafted and through the visions that move forward into the future as the makeup of the city changes and evolves.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you've already mentioned the comprehensive plan, but the Planning Commission is helping to lead Burian's comprehensive plan, vision and strategies for how the city will grow and change in the coming 20 years. What aspects of the comprehensive plan do you envision as a priority for Burian in 2044?
Well, I know that some of the things that are being considered moving forward are neighborhood hubs and an expansion of downtown. And I believe very strongly that neighborhood hubs are vitally important as places for people to, I mean, as, as, as a mechanism where people can gather in and at a really local level and, you know, find community, but also as the creative district develops and grows, expanding the, the visual identity of downtown to create, you know, something that's a bit more vibrant, some tourist friendly, but also community building aspects to the city. Moving forward, the transportation issues that are always, well, always an issue. The development of the Ambon Corridor, redevelopment of Boulevard Park. I know that there's a Salmon Creek neighborhood plan that is, has been somewhat recently looked at. And if, you know, each neighborhood had an opportunity to have their own dialogue and plan. And then, you know, the downtown I see as the, the, the core and meeting center for all of these. I, now, once again, I get nervous and I lose my place, so I apologize. But the comprehensive plan vision needs, I mean, it needs to address all of these, all of these things, basically. And those two, I know, are alternatives that are going to be presented to the council. And I say, I mean, I would say, how can we have the best of both worlds?
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us here and thank you for applying.
Absolutely.
Why is it important for the Planning Commission to incorporate diversity, equity and inclusion in its work? And how do you see yourself contributing to maintaining these core values in the work you do on the commission?
So the work that I have done in the past, beginning with my work in the, in early 2000s, all the way up through my work on the Planning Commission has been all about equity and inclusion and finding a space for everybody. And it's, you know, the city is made up of all kinds of people. And each, each resident is important and plays a part in the city. And if anyone feels excluded, that creates a negativity in the city that has unintended or intended sometimes repercussions that affect everyone negatively. And so it would be my goal if I was approved for being on the Planning Commission to make sure that that's always front and center and, and listening to everyone and bringing, you know, at the table of the Planning Commission, making sure that the conversation remains grounded, practical, but open also, ongoing as, you know, every person is important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions to the clerk or to anyone on the process for the meeting? Nope. Good. Okay.
Hi Deputy Mayor Kevin Schilling, I'm calling the regular meeting of the Burien City Council to order on September 25th, 2023. The time is 7:00 PM. This hybrid meeting is being conducted in person at Burien City Hall and virtually via Zoom webinar. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Stephanie Mora will now read the Native Land and Peoples acknowledgment.
We begin by honoring and acknowledging that this meeting is taking place on the ancestral lands and waters of many Koscielish tribal peoples who have since time immemorial protected and been in relationship with the Sheila she's in these precious lands we know as Burien in our home. As a government agency that is occupying indigenous land, it is important that we remember the history of our area and to work towards fixing the injustice that persists. We acknowledge our region's tribal citizens, their descendants, and their ancestors, and we honor their invaluable contributions to this region's community's identity, economy, history, culture, and future.
Thank you. The clerk will now take the roll.
Thank you. Before we go into roll call, I'd like to remind those attending on Zoom that we are offering Spanish interpretation. So at the bottom of your screen, if you would please select the language you would like to listen to this meeting in, in either English or Spanish. And on the next slide, show us how to do so on your mobile app. And with that, we'll go into roll call. Mayor Sofia Aragon.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kevin Schilling.
Here.
Councilmember Hugo Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Jimmy Mata.
Present.
Councilmember Sydney Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sarah Moore.
Present.
And Councilmember Stephanie Mora.
Present.
All are present.
Thank you. Before we move on, as a reminder, each council member has five minutes for each comment question on a topic and may ask for a second round of comments if all council members have had a chance to speak. To the extent not otherwise stated in our rules of the order, the procedure of council discussion will be consistent with Robert's Rules of Order 12th Edition. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Do you have your hand raised?
Yes, I do. So what we're supposed to be approving is the agenda, not the consent agenda. Is agenda confirmation?
Oh, right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, please raise your hand. Or say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is confirmed. Okay, our presentation and proclamation for this evening, National Literacy Month proclamation by Councilmember Moore.
We have, we have some guests here tonight. Would you like to introduce them or should I introduce them? Oh, I can. Okay. Give me just a sec here. There we are. Okay. So we have a few folks joining us tonight from Team Read. We have Meg Ali and we have Daryl Conrad and Kiko, who are here to accept the proclamation tonight. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then welcome them up to give some comments. Whereas September is National Literacy Month with International Literacy Day celebrated on September 8th. And whereas International Literacy Day was founded by a proclamation of the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization in 1966 to remind the public of the importance of literacy as a matter of dignity and human rights. And whereas one in three third graders in Washington State are reading below grade level, this number rises to 50% in high poverty schools and among English language learners. And whereas students reading below grade level are four times more likely to drop out of high school, creating an opportunity gap that makes it increasingly challenging for them to succeed academically and access careers in a competitive and highly skilled economy. And whereas caregivers can support their children's literacy journey by reading to them at home. And whereas access to high quality tutoring programs and access to reading materials can make a big difference for young readers, yet many schools lack resources to provide one-on-one support. And whereas organizations like Team Read, in partnership with schools, libraries, and community groups, offer reading support that supplements classroom learning, resulting in more confident, joyful readers. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Burien, Washington, does hereby ask all Burien community members to join together to proclaim September 2023 Literacy Month in the city of Burien and urges all community members to help grow literacy in the Burien community dated this 25th day of September, September 2023.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daryl and Kiko, and I'd like to say thank you for issuing this proclamation. I'm a student at Highline High School, and for the past two years, I've worked as a reading coach at Team Read's Hazel Valley Elementary site. Team Read works closely with teachers to identify the kids who need a little extra help learning to read and matches them with a coach from a local high school like myself. We work with our readers twice a week, and by the end of the year, over 70% of them are reading at or above grade level. And here's a little about my own experience with Team Read. Being a tutor for Team Read over the past few, past few years has been a valuable work and learning experience for me. It's not only a paid job for us teens, but also a meaningful way to give back to the community. While the elementary kids are learning how to read, write, and speak better, I, along with the other coaches, are learning how to communicate, work with others, and act as a leader so I can apply those skills later on in my life. While working one-on-one is how our sessions normally work, there are rare occasions when coaches are absent and you have to take on another kid or two. While it can be chaotic, it pushes you to adapt to a difficult situation and figure out a quick, surefire way to connect with a kid you've never met. This has happened to me at least a few times over the past two years, and I'm proud to say that through Team Read, I've learned to handle it quickly and efficiently each and every time. I've tutored two readers, one in my freshman freshman year and one in my sophomore year, and both of them have exceeded my expectations. For context, one system of measuring a reader's reading level is through the alphabet A to Z. The reader I tutored in my freshman year started at Level C and progressed to Level I. Last year, my readers' reading, writing, and speaking skills were around the Level D mark, but by the end had gone all the way to the Level O mark. And that's a huge breakthrough for them, especially since Team Read is a program meant to help people that are behind in their own grade level. Their passion to learn more, become better and better, and exceed my and everyone's expectations, even spread to those around them, and it's all thanks to Team Read and what it stands for. Literacy is fundamental to our ability to learn, grow, and make good choices for our community. And it takes the investment of all of us to make sure that kids have access to books and the support they need to make, to make and become great readers. On behalf of Team Read, I'd like to express gratitude to the city council for recognizing National Literacy Month and understanding the importance of this fundamental skill. We're honored to accept this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Any council reports? Okay. Moving on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, council. I have a few items to share, but I would like to start off with a little interactive. We've noticed last year and this year that we have a continued issue with the council calendar that we hope to resolve. We will make a more permanent correction for 2024, but for this year, we'd like to ask council to consider canceling its meeting on the Monday after Thanksgiving. Just staff travel can maybe challenge to potentially have a quorum. So if we have approval, we could cancel that meeting.
Thumbs up for folks if it all works out in the calendar.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. A few other items to, to share with council. A bit of a reminder, we would like, staff would like, and I would like to ask council to remain on topic when it's discussing a particular issue. You know, read here verbatim, it is important for members of council to remain on topic when discussing an issue or potential projects during a meeting. Discussing two separate issues and/or projects may cause confusion within the community. Here's an example, comments made during last week's meeting have caused an influx of email messages that are conflating two separate issues. One is a project that relates to the Camp One Anbaum and 120th. And the other is a project that we are working towards a potential partnership with, with the King County and the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. These are two separate projects, I just want to be clear. And also want to state that at no point has council ever asked me or staff to investigate the potential of an encampment in Boulevard Park. These are just some of the repetitive themes that we're seeing, and I want to make sure that we just remind council to please not conflate issues and to not get off topic as best as possible. So we ask that you do that. The other is an update on the potential Palat Village project. We received a sample budget from the Regional Homelessness Authority that indicates that the project will most certainly exceed
And with that, we'll go in a roll call. Mayor Sophia Aragon.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kevin Schilling.
Here.
Councilmember Hugo Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Jimmy Mata.
Present.
Councilmember Sydney Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sarah Moore.
Present.
And Councilmember Stephanie Mora.
Present.
All are present.
Thank you. Before we move on, as a reminder, each council member has five minutes for each comment question on a topic and may ask for a second round of comments if all council members have had a chance to speak. To the extent not otherwise stated in our rules of the order, the procedure of council discussion will be consistent with Robert's Rules of Order 12th Edition. But I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Do you have your hand raised?
Yes, I do. So what we're supposed to be approving is the agenda, not the consent agenda. This is agenda confirmation.
Oh, right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, please raise your hand. Or say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is confirmed. Okay, our presentation and proclamation for this evening, National Literacy Month proclamation by Councilmember Moore.
We have, we have some guests here tonight. Would you like to introduce them or should I introduce them? Oh, I can. Okay. Give me just a sec here. Right. There we are, okay. So we have a few folks joining us tonight from Team Read. We have Meg Ali and we have Daryl Conrad and Kiko, who are here to accept the proclamation tonight. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then welcome them up to give some comments. Whereas September is National Literacy Month with International Literacy Day celebrated on September 8th. And whereas International Literacy Day was founded by a proclamation of the United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization in 1966 to remind the public of the importance of literacy as a matter of dignity and human rights. And whereas one in three third graders in Washington State are reading below grade level, this number rises to 50% in high poverty schools and among English language learners. And whereas students reading below grade level are four times more likely to drop out of high school, creating an opportunity gap that makes it increasingly challenging for them to succeed academically and access careers in a competitive and highly skilled economy. And whereas caregivers can support their children's literacy journey by reading to them at home. And whereas access to high quality tutoring programs and access to reading materials can make a big difference for young readers, yet many schools lack resources to provide one-on-one support. And whereas organizations like Team Read in partnership with schools, libraries and community groups offer reading support that supplements classroom learning resulting in more confident joyful readers. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Burian, Washington does hereby ask all Burian community members to join together to proclaim September 2023 Literacy Month in the City of Burian and urges all community members to help grow literacy in the Burian community dated this 25th day of September, September 2023.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daryl and Kiko and I'd like to say thank you for issuing this proclamation. I'm a student at Highline High School and for the past two years I've worked as a reading coach at Team Read's Hazel Valley Elementary site. Team Read works closely with teachers to identify the kids who need a little extra help learning to read and matches them with a coach from a local high school like myself. We work with our readers twice a week and by the end of the year, over 70% of them are reading at or above grade level. And here's a little about my own experience with Team Read. Being a tutor for Team Read over the past few, past few years has been a valuable work and learning experience for me. It's not only a paid job for us teens, but also a meaningful way to give back to the community. While the elementary kids are learning how to read, write and speak better, I, along with the other coaches, are learning how to communicate, work with others and act as a leader so I can apply those skills later on in my life. While working one-on-one is how our sessions normally work, there are rare occasions when coaches are absent and you have to take on another kid or two. While it can be chaotic, it pushes you to adapt to a difficult situation and figure out a quick surefire way to connect with a kid you've never met. This has happened to me at least a few times over the past two years and I'm proud to say that through Team Read, I've learned to handle it quickly and efficiently each and every time. I've tutored two readers, one in my freshman, freshman year and one in my sophomore year, and both of them have exceeded my expectations. For context, one system of measuring a reader's reading level is through the alphabet A to Z. The reader I tutored in my freshman year started at Level C and progressed to Level I. Last year, my reader's reading, writing and speaking skills were around the Level D mark, but by the end had gone all the way to the Level O mark. And that's a huge breakthrough for them, especially since Team Read is a program meant to help people that are behind in their own grade level. Their passion to learn more, become better and better and exceed my and everyone's expectations even spread to those around them. And it's all thanks to Team Read and what it stands for. Literacy is fundamental to our ability to learn, grow and make good choices for our community. And it takes the investment of all of us to make sure that kids have access to books and the support they need to make, to, to make and become great readers. On behalf of Team Read, I'd like to express gratitude to the City Council for recognizing National Literacy Month and understanding the importance of this fundamental skill. We're honored to accept this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Any council reports? Okay. Moving on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, council. I have a few items to share, but I would like to start off with the, so there's a little interactive. We've noticed last year and this year that we have a continued issue with the council calendar that we hope to resolve. We will make a more permanent correction for 2024, but for this year, we'd like to ask council to consider canceling its meeting on the Monday after Thanksgiving. Just staff travel can maybe challenge to potentially have a quorum. So if we have approval, we could cancel that meeting.
Thumbs up for folks if it, but it all works out in the calendar.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. A few other items to, to share with council. A bit of a reminder, we, we would like, staff would like, and I would like to ask council to remain on topic when it's discussing a particular issue. You know, read here verbatim, it is important for members of council to remain on topic when discussing an issue or potential projects during a meeting. Discussing two separate issues and or projects may cause confusion within the community. Here's an example, comments made during last week's meeting have caused an influx of email messages that are completing two separate issues. One is a project that relates to the camp on Ambon and 120th. And the other is a project that we are working towards a potential partnership with, with the King County and the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. These are two separate projects, I just want to be clear. And also want to state that at no point has council ever asked me or staff to investigate the potential of an encampment in Boulevard Park. These are just some of the repetitive themes that we're seeing and I want to make sure that we just remind council to please not conflate issues and to not get off topic as, as best as possible. So we ask that you do that. The other is an update on the potential pallet village project. We received a sample budget from the Regional Homelessness Authority that indicates that the project will most certainly exceed the $1 million that have been offered by the county. We are currently working to identify pots of money that may be used to fill in the gaps. We have several pots of ARPA money that may be available to us as we move forward. But at the moment, we're looking at an approximate, at least a minimum $200,000 over the $1 million that was offered by the county. So as soon as we have more information to share with council about where these funds may come from to fill the gaps, and we'll certainly come back to council and share that information. Some important news to share with council about staff's work on advancing racial equity. We have a advancing racial equity committee that is working internally to make sure that advancing racial equity and DEI is an important component of city work. The committee itself has now successfully secured the, a contract with a consultant. The consultant will work with teams to be able to roll out DEI and racial equity components throughout our budget process, throughout how we operate, how we bring aboard new personnel, essentially how we deal with the community in general. This is not inclusive of all the items, but just wanted to highlight a few, a few components from our RFP or the successful contract. Review city reports and data gathering during outreach efforts. Work with internal city groups to ensure efficiency and process. Use of budget and resources support for expanding, advancing racial equity efforts. Establish criteria to help create data-driven processes. So we're proud of this work and the internal committee is going to continue to provide more information for council as we move forward. The Parks Department has had some changing in personnel. More specifically, we've had some promotions from within. We're very proud to be an organization that does promote from within because we, we like to keep our talent. I'd like to announce that Dabney McFarland will be promoted to Recreation Coordinator. She will oversee adult and senior programs at the Burian Community Center and also rental programs. Honorio Miralles will be promoted to Parks Maintenance Lead. He will be lead for Parks Maintenance Crew and has does, has done an excellent job with Team Burian and Parks. And lastly, we have Lisa Robinson, who will be promoted to Parks Maintenance Worker. She is an intermittent staff and we're very proud to make her a full-time employee with, with the Parks Departments. I'd like to mention them to you. An update on council's request and information for minimum wage in Burian. We have staff, mostly staff have done a considerable amount of work on the topic. They've spoken with organizations that are involved in the issue, not just local businesses, but statewide organizations as well as folks that have association with the Trended Writers Union. So we're working to meet with every person that has a potential stake in this issue with the condensed amount of time that we have to report back to council. Last week on Friday, the Burian Economic Development Partnership held a public meeting that included representatives from local businesses, labor unions, transit writers, union, regional and statewide organizations. Conversation during the public meeting remained very respectful of everyone's perspectives and we feel very confident that more positive information will come from our continued dialogue. So we hope to have something to share with council in October. And then we could certainly ask for more information from the council on how it would like for staff to proceed on the topic. And lastly, just want to share with council that we, that I and members of my team have met with the more we love and we have drafted a potential scope for contract for partnership with the organization and we hope to have a contract with them very soon. If we have more information to share on that topic with council as we move forward. And that is what I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you. And a reminder to the audience, please no yelling, cheering or noises. We're moving into public comment. Could we get a motion from council for either an extension by 30 minutes or a one-minute limit to, to public comment because right now we have 26 folks signed up. So is it possible, would we get a motion to extend?
I move to limit public comment to one minute.
Oh, okay. Seconded. So moved and seconded to limit public comment to one minute per person. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
That's me in favor, so Mayor Sophia Aragon in favor, councilmembers Jimmy Mata and councilmember Sarah Moore. All those opposed, please raise your hand. It's councilmember Stephanie Mora, councilmember Sydney Moore, councilmember Hugo Garcia. So a public comment has been reduced to one minute per person? We've total, we have 26 people in total signed up as of right now.
The City of Burian values public input and community members are encouraged to sign up to speak by 6:45 PM or to submit a written comment by using the public comment form or by emailing cityclerk@burianwad.gov. The order in which City Council will receive comments will be as follows. First, we will call in those who have signed up to speak. Second, we will call in those who have used the raise hand feature on Zoom or have requested to speak in council chambers. And any submitted written comments will be forwarded to City Council and noted in the meeting minutes. Additionally, community members must limit their remarks to one minute. And the total time allotted at this time for the comment period is 30 minutes. At this time, we will share the public comment signup list and for those attending in person, please be prepared to speak at the lectern and for those attending on Zoom, please be prepared to unmute yourself. And with that, the first person signed up to speak is Todd Baldwin. If you would please turn on the mic. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, well, the, the first time I called the police about the encampment on Ambon was because I saw a young Native American girl being dropped off there. She appeared to be about 14 years old. She had no shoes. She was just in her underwear and it very much appeared that she was being sex trafficked. And we also know that on July 7th, a woman living in the encampment was brutally raped at gunpoint. It was mentioned at the last meeting that anyone who is against this encampment is a white supremacist. And imagine that, that a black man trying to save a Native American girl would be deemed a white supremacist. It is so laughable. Only a politician could come up with that. This is getting ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. We just want people to be safe. We want the sex trafficking to stop.
Next on Zoom, we have Tony Bart. Tony, would you please unmute yourself at this time? Tony, whenever you're ready, please unmute yourself. Okay. We'll go to the next person for now. Next is Darla Green. And Darla, are you in person? You are not on Zoom either. So next person is Emily Greenberg, who is also not on Zoom. So next is Laura Nensetti.
Hi, thanks. My name is Lauren Nensetti. I'm the Executive Director of Eldorado West, which is a senior community that has been here in Burian for 30 years. I have 100 residents, three of whom joined me this evening, that I'm responsible for. They age and range from 60 to 100. They have multiple sclerosis, Parkinson's, dementia, Alzheimer's, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia and a lot who are just typically getting older. They are afraid. We have an encampment on the street outside of our building. There are drugs. There is clearly mental illness. These are clearly people who need help. But my vulnerable population needs help too. And this creates anxiety, which turns into paranoia, which affects them emotionally and physically and cognitively. And we need support to clean it up. Thank you.
Next is August Hawn.
I rise in support of Hugo Garcia. His observation that the actions of the city wreak of white supremacy is spot on. I strive to be an anti-racist, but I do not connect the dots the way Hugo did. To move the encampment from near homes, businesses and a library in a rich white area of the city simply to place it next to homes, businesses and a library in a historically neglected area is classic racism. People have prejudices and that is human nature. When those prejudices are amplified via government power to harm one group in favor of another, that is racism. I do not believe that you are acting in malice, but you are prejudiced and you are using your power to harm one area of the city over another. You should examine your motives for what you're doing as they appear to be biased and their outcome racist.
Next is Linda Akey.
My name is Linda Akey and I live across the street in downtown Burian. With the coming storm and rainy season, my heart is heavy because I feel for the people in our community who will be living through the season outside. I know some people reject help. However, anyone who has ever struggled with addiction or a family member who struggles with it knows that sometimes rock bottom helps a person decide their life is unmanageable and that they need help. We must stop enabling homeless encampments and start working on sustainable solutions that help the unhoused move out of this limbo and danger and into safety and a path forward. I support passing the tent encampment ban and continuing to incentivize substance abuse and mental health treatment options with a path to recovery. We must reject tent encampments as a solution and shift the conversation to treatment and housing.
Next is Vicki Hartley.
Good evening, I'm Vicki Hartley from Boulevard Park. Last week, you received a generous offer from Hope Factory that could mean that people now barely surviving in tents could have greater protection from the winter rain and cold. All you have to do is provide a suitable location. The vacant lot next to the library in Boulevard Park is not a suitable location. The encampment has already moved from one library. The Boulevard Park Library is where children wait for the school bus, attend story hours, do their homework and other community activities. How is moving the encampment to Boulevard Park any less a perceived risk than that of the Ambon site?
Next is Jennifer Pachamba.
Good evening, council. As a white woman, I work every day to be anti-racist. I work especially hard in my job as an educator. The structures that we collectively work in were built to keep people of color and women out. Those structures that our country was built on, those structures that have historically been put in place to uphold a racist culture. Those structures that Councilmember Garcia brought up last Monday. For the past seven months, for the most part, conversations have been avoided about providing temporary housing for homeless folks in our community. Instead, they have been swept from the library to the ever essential dog park, to grocery outlet, to Ambon. Now, in four short meetings, an ordinance 818 is set to pass and therefore sweeping folks the most marginalized even further. It is not a loss on us that folks seem okay with this, out of sight, out of mind. But also that the property in Boulevard Park, a place next to a library, businesses in a low income area would be okay for a tiny home, pallet home, which I fully support, shelter for people. That is exactly what Councilmember Garcia was highlighting. This, that is an action, that action upholds structures that are rooted in white supremacy. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia.
You're so welcome.
Next is Heather.
Kind of funny how we had more people last week and we still got two minutes. So we're going to ramble and we're going to do this really quick. All right, how is it I was called out for my language, but Hugo was not? I call that BS and then Stephanie called for him to be censored. No one had the balls to stand with her in her second motion. That was sad pathetic and showed a bunch of cowards like you really are. Council members need to be held accountable for their actions. You're just perpetuating, perpetuating, that's a big fancy word, bad behavior by not doing anything. You have done this time and time again. Another one mentioned, being Sydney, she is guilty and says she's guilty and yet you have not done nothing to sanction her either. Still wonder you can't get anything accomplished when you can't even wrangle your own council members. No matter how hard you hit that, that gavel, Kevin, you, you can't get this in order. In regards to the campaign, I hope you pass it again. Something needs to be done in showing that you're at least, make an attempt to do something about the situation at hand, especially when you are shown up by grocery, shown up by the grocery outlet when they handled the problem that was forced upon in front of their swords, the lack of the action by, on your behalf. People beg and plead for your help, but all you do is drag feet, drag feet, drag feet, drag feet. For the safety of all parties involved, you need to pass this ban and camping ban and take her to the [inaudible] because from what I see, oh, hold on. Because when I see you, you can keep this up and you'll never be able to get in front of this.
Next is Chastain Edgar.
Hello, I'm requesting that you pass ordinance 818, the unlawful camping ban this evening. It will, it will, it's one step forward in the process. Secondly, I am asking that council members not repeat false information from the stias, that they have their facts checked and if they do not have the facts on it, they have a city staff member check it for them. A false information confuses the public. And then lastly, as we speak about equity, we need more than just racial equity in this city. We have inequity for the disabled in the city and for senior citizens. And I'm asking that you look at all, that also when you speak about equity in the documents you draft. Thank you.
Next is Karina Ibaya. Karina. Okay, next is Patricia Hudson.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Hudson and I am a 29-year resident of Burian in Boulevard Park. Many cities like Burian are punishing homeless people for sleeping in public. However, arresting or ticketing people who have nowhere else to go doesn't help them find permanent housing, according to the National Law Center for Homelessness and Poverty Report. Instead, policies criminalizing homelessness can make it more difficult to afford and qualify for housing. These ordinances continue the cycle of displacing people without providing any safer, stable alternative place to live, increasing the risk that people lose their connections with outreach and services and make it more difficult for them to build their and rebuild their lives. Arresting or ticketing people have nowhere else to go doesn't help them find permanent housing. As a matter of fact, misdemeanor convictions can exclude someone from housing or subsidized housing. Please, please, I ask that you make changes and help our unhoused rebuild. Thank you.
Next is Colleen Hinton on Zoom. Colleen, would you please unmute yourself at this time?
Thank you, good evening. My name is Colleen Hinton and I've lived in Burian for over 20 years. I see that your agenda tonight includes the appointment of planning commissioners and as you are thinking about these appointments, I ask you to factor in something very important. Burian's Climate Action Plan must be a major focus in all the work undertaken by the Planning Commission. I urge the council to appoint at least one commissioner who is knowledgeable about and highly motivated to ensure that everything the commission does is viewed through a climate lens. Burian has an ambitious and commendable climate action plan that needs to be implemented urgently in order to quickly reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and mitigate the effects of climate change we are already experiencing. The Planning Commission can help the city do that. I know of two applicants, Paul Gould and Annie Phillips, who are active members of Burian People for Climate Action and would bring that climate lens to the commission's work.
Thank you.
Ask that you consider appointing at least one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kelsey Vanheek.
I hope that none of us are judged by the actions of our weakest moments, but rather the strength we show when and if we're ever given a second chance. I love this quote from Ted Lasso. It reminds me of a time at work when a woman called me out for pushing a women's agenda that ignored women of color like her. I was defensive, but she gave me the greatest gift of my professional life. The opportunity to reflect, to understand how my actions were being perceived by others and a second chance to do better. Tonight, you all have two second chances. First, to reflect on the gift that Councilmember Garcia gave you last week, to live the part of your civility pledge to assume his good intent and to reflect on your own actions and how they are perceived by many of your constituents, even if you do not agree. Your other second chance is on the consent agenda. I hope you have the strength to reflect on ordinance 818 and vote another way, to offer people a stable place to go before you ban their attempts at survival in the midst of instability and danger. We all deserve second chances and I We all deserve second chances and I hope you take these and that you are judged accordingly.
Next is Benjamin Schlemmer.
Hello again, so as we keep hearing many times when it comes to looking for solutions for Burian, money is a major problem. So here's another idea to help with money. Invest a bit more into new roads so that when the next time we build a road, they last longer, create less wear on people's cars, it also makes less sound and also it lasts longer so that there's less pollutions coming up from the creation of more roads. That gives the city more time to invest money that would go into repairs, into anything else that the city needs to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Zoe Vermette.
Hello, good evening. I'm here to speak in support of Hugo Garcia. At last week's council meeting, CM Garcia explained to the council why he had concerns about a plan under consideration by the city to cite a sanctioned homeless encampment near the Boulevard Park Library. He pointed out the hypocrisy of this plan since the original encampment was in downtown Burian next to the main library here. Many of people who live in this area and the businesses were in favor of displacing the residents of this encampment citing safety concerns and as well as concerns that the presence of the encampment might impact local businesses. And CM Garcia told the council that this kind of hypocrisy fits a pattern of white supremacy where black and brown communities suffer more when it comes to policy decisions that may negatively impact a community. He never called anybody racist or said that anybody was a white supremacist. He was talking about a pattern of white supremacy in decision making.
Thank you.
Next is Jen Greenstein.
My shirt says empathy, kindness and respect. The same kind of shirt that Hugo Garcia campaigns with. He represents all these things. I stand with Hugo Garcia. Hugo Garcia, thank you. Thank you for being on this council. Thank you for being so brave. Thank you for speaking truth. You take a lot of crap for it, including the rudeness of the people behind me. I can't even believe it. I won't get over it. Miss flip off and puss off everyone and CM Mora, you laugh when she flips the bird. Where's your empathy, kindness and respect? You ought to be censored. What is this with censoring everything? I don't like what somebody says, so censor this, censor that, censor this. Come on. Grow up. Grow up, recognize white supremacy when it exists.
Thank you. Thank you. And as a reminder to the audience, please, please, no outbursts.
Thank you, CM.
Please, no outbursts.
Next is Elizabeth Hale. Elizabeth Hale. Okay, next is Brian Burbank. Brian Burbank. Next is Maggie Gulick on Zoom. And Maggie, I do not see you on Zoom. So next is Sally Nelson on Zoom. Sally, would you please unmute yourself at this time? Sally, you may begin when you're ready.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
Hello?
Why don't we come back to Sally?
Thank you. Okay, next is Mike Proback.
Yeah, for the record, it's Proback. Hey, I was here about five, six months ago. And since that time, I've gone back and I've reviewed a number of meetings, I watch them. I'm just shocked that none of you take notes at all when your constituents are out here making suggestions to you. I've seen eyes roll, I've seen yawns, I've seen arms crossed and laid back. You know, pay attention, you guys, we're the ones that vote you in. And I must say, you won't be voted in again from me. Why is it that I can now drive over here to Ambomb? I see a superfund hazardous waste site there. And I say that because last Sunday, the Seattle Times on the front page had a big article about the waste site down the Duamish River. I walked those grounds the other day at the Ambomb and it was just filth. If every one of you would go over there and walk the grounds, pick up two or three of those people, load them in your Prius or whatever car you drive, take them back to your house. I guarantee you will find a place for those people to live within the next couple of days. Don't tell me there's no place for those people to go.
Thank you.
Next is Pat Kyle.
Thank you, Mike.
I've lived in Burian in the same house for 23 years and never during that time have I been in as many traffic jams as I have been in since the redo of Ambomb. And the corner of 116th and Ambomb is now, we don't even know which way we're supposed to go. There's, they've taken the lights and changed them all and you can't tell if you're supposed to go right or you go forward. It's such a mess. And I talked to the gentleman who was overseeing the King County doing that and told them what a nightmare it is. And he said he drives around, it doesn't seem so bad. Well, he doesn't live in that area. And we've seen traffic jams on Ambomb since stupid bus lanes went in. And about four buses a day, what was the point? And those yellow markers that nobody can turn, so they have to go make a U-turn somewhere. It's pathetic.
Thank you.
I don't know who was in charge of that.
Next is Nancy Pick.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Thurgood Marshall said, when you see wrong, inequality or injustice, speak out because this is your country. This is your democracy. Make it, protect it, pass it on. I would like to commend you, Councilmember Garcia, for your bravery in speaking uncomfortable truths. Thank you for asking us to stop and evaluate our actions because in our zeal to find a solution to a difficult problem, regardless of our motives, we can and often do cause unintended harm. The first thing I thought of when I heard that a site adjacent to the Boulevard Park Library was being considered was the irony of where this all started, which is outside this library. I didn't come here and mention that. I figured the air traffic noise levels would do the hard part for me. And if not, as you know, I've really been wanting us to find another place because the Ambomb location is very unsafe. So I said nothing and I am not proud of saying nothing.
Thank you.
Anyway, listen to him again, to what he actually said.
Okay, we're going back to the top of our list, Tony Bars. I see that you're on Zoom now. Would you please unmute yourself at this time? Tony, you may begin when you're ready. Okay, we'll go to Darla. Darla, would you please unmute yourself at this time? Darla, you're muted. Okay, we'll go to the next person. CJ on Zoom. CJ, would you please unmute yourself at this time?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm sympathetic to the concerns of some council members regarding equity and regards to the location of the encampment. However, for those of us living in Salmon Creek where the encampment is now, it's a little frustrating because it seems as though the residents downtown had the full attention of the council and had their concerns heard. And now the residents of Boulevard Park are having their concerns heard regarding a sanctioned encampment. However, we were never given that opportunity to voice our concerns when actions of council directly led to the encampment moving three miles north of downtown into a working class neighborhood, directly across the street from a mobile home park. Even after the unhoused were directed north, there were no meetings to address the impact on the residents despite multiple requests and emails voicing our concerns. There was no mention of its impact until a no camping ordinance was on the agenda. I asked the council to work together to find a safe, sustainable solution that works for all residents of Burian, including the unhoused and those in the Salmon Creek neighborhood that have had to manage this encampment for four months with limited resources and very little support from the city.
Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Karen Pinkula. Karen, would you please unmute yourself at this time?
Hi. Over the last six months, I have been disappointed to see the council majority and city manager try to censure, silence and patronize the other three council members. This minority on the council represents Burian voters who are asking hard questions and asking for humane and equitable action. They are our voice when some of our other elected officials seem to only be advocating for a select few. Bullying and gaslighting my voice is not okay. I'm worried that this pattern of behavior will continue to reflect the abhorrent political bullying we have been seeing in other state legislatures. This is not Burian. This is not who we are. Thank you.
Next on Zoom, we have Saba. Saba, would you please unmute yourself at this time?
Hi, I'm Saba. I'm a nurse and I live in Burian. I staunchly oppose the adoption of ordinance eight one eight. Specifically, section one E demonstrates a vast lack of understanding of what barriers unhoused folks face that make them unable to utilize shelters. And the ordinance deems shelters placed considered available in unrealistic scenarios. Unhoused folks, I've heard folks talk about, you know, the vulnerable, like the disabled, the elderly. Those include unhoused people. So many disabled people I see come in and out of the hospital who are unhoused. And when you're removing the safe place they have in telling them that the shelter is where they should be, a lot of these peoples are doing chemotherapy, they're immunocompromised, a shelter is not the good place for them to be. I hope you don't adopt it. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Next is Adam Michaels. Adam, oops. Adam, would you please unmute yourself at this time?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, so it would have taken less than an hour and a half to give everyone their three minutes. It's really disheartening that you couldn't do that. But worse of all is Councilmember Sarah Moore voting to limit our speech. I thought that you were better than that. And I think that's deserving of you being voted out of office. It's disgusting that you guys sit up there and can't give us but one minute? Are you joking? One minute is pathetic. You could have given us two minutes and it would have taken less than an hour. You all should be ashamed and especially Councilmember Sarah Moore to silence us like that. I think a lot of people thought you were one of the better council members up there and apparently not. The three who voted to not limit it are the only three who deserve to be on the council. Goodbye.
At this time, I'd like to ask if anyone else would like to share a comment to please proceed to the podium or to please raise your hand on Zoom at this time.
Heather, can we try to get Sally Nelson back? Because I saw she tried to raise her hand again.
Sure. Sally, would you please unmute yourself at this time?
Okay, can you hear?
There you go, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. I heard the city manager this evening allude to a contract he might decide to accept for the We Love organization. I'm writing regarding that because Ms. Moreland, to my knowledge, has refused all opportunities to speak and provide essential information about her organization, including detailed information about the homeless place, where and for how long and what record she can point to of success. How long has she been in business? What does she charge? Who carries out the sweep and how are they qualified? It's one thing for a private business or person to contract with a for-profit organization, no problem. It is quite another for a city to hire an organization with no public track record that I'm aware of and the refusal for her to speak before us. I hope you won't agree to that and will question the city manager
Thank you.
about his reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask again if anyone in the audience would like to share a comment to please proceed to the podium or for those on Zoom, to please raise your hand at this time. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I don't believe so.
Thank you very much. Do I have a suggested motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would.
Sorry, Councilmember Moore had her hand up.
So I would like to move that we take option E, adoption of ordinance number eight one eight, off the consent agenda and put it under item A on the business agenda.
Okay, so ordinance eight one eight will be placed on a new item, item B, on the business agenda. Moving council planning calendar to item C. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
As amended.
As amended. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Councilmember Sarah Moore.
Approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Move the second to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, oh, that was Councilmember Hugo Garcia, Councilmember Sidney Moore, Deputy Mayor Kevin Schilling, Councilmember Sarah Moore, Councilmember Stephanie Mora, all those opposed. All those abstaining. Councilmember Mata, Mayor Argon, how do you vote?
Abstain.
With Councilmember Mata and Sophia, Mayor Argon abstaining, okay. Well, we're moving on to our first business agenda item, which is appointing seven candidates to the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to provide a brief overview. A total of 27 applications were received and council members individually reviewed all applications and narrowed the applicant pool to 25 candidates. And on September 18th, City Council finalized the applicant pool to 10 candidates. These candidates were interviewed earlier this evening during a city council special meeting. The candidates that are being considered this evening are Annie Phillips, Benjamin Schlemmer, Heidi Turner, Jessica Ivy, Jimmy Mata Jr., Joshua Halpin, Paul Croon, Paul Gould, Sam Ostrander and Shelley Park. Next slide, please. As a reminder, the city is recruiting to fill seven vacated planning commission positions. And I would note that position numbers five, six and seven expire on March 31, 2024. And next slide, please. At this time, staff recommends appointing these three positions for their full four-year terms to expire on March 31, 2028. And this would eliminate the need to recruit and interview additional candidates in early 2024 during the regular recruitment process. And before we proceed to candidate appointments, does council have any questions at this time?
No question. Oh, Councilmember Mata.
This question is back for legal, for attorney. One of the candidates here is my understanding that there's a conflict of interest, obviously it's my son, so I would vote for him. And of course, I would say that would be a conflict of interest. But my understanding is that I can vote for other individuals, which would be okay for the process. Am I correct with saying that, City Attorney?
Yes. Again, with the conflict of interest, what you're doing is you're identifying that there is a relationship or there is something there that is, that should be disclosed. And while in this case it seems obvious, it still is the appropriate thing to do to identify it. Your choice to withdraw from voting as to him is certainly appropriate and is reasonable. It eliminates the opportunity for someone to say that somehow or another you or this person had an unfair advantage, so to speak. But as to every other candidate, as far as I know, there's no conflict for you unless you identify it. There's no conflict for you voting as to any of the other. There's no conflict for you voting as to any of the other candidates, um, to, for the planning commission.
Thank you. Yes, that would be a constant because who wouldn't vote for their own son? Thank you.
I know a few people, but, um, so I spoke with, uh, uh, the city clerk, um, earlier about the process for this. So we're gonna have our Excel spreadsheet come up. Um, we're gonna do as we usually do with boards and commissions. We're gonna go through each council member one by one. And then we're gonna motion and vote on each person individually, not as a slate. Um, so can we have a motion for the first item here on the suggested motion from staff to make? I'm, I'm assuming this is to make it a little smoother. Do you want to explain why you're requesting us to amend the terms of positions five, six, and seven to expire in twenty twenty-eight instead of the years that they're set to expire now, which is uh, twenty-four?
Yes, uh, this would eliminate the need to, uh, have another recruitment process and for council to interview again in early, uh, spring next year. Um, so if you were not to extend the terms for their full four-year terms, um, council would then have to reappoint again for these three additional positions.
I see, okay. It's suggested, so do I hear a motion to do that is if any, if, if folks think that's a good idea? Councilmember Mata?
I'll make a motion that, uh, we go with staff's recommendation of position five, six, and seven.
Second, moved and seconded to amend the terms of positions five, six, and seven to expire on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight instead of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Any in fa- any in favor comments or comments against? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Or say aye. Uh, Mayor Argon, deputy mayor Schilling, councilmember Garcia, councilmember Mata, councilmember Mora, and councilmember Sarah Moore in favor, all those opposed? All those abstaining? Councilmember Sidney Moore abstaining. All right. Moving to appoint the following candidates to serve on the planning commission.
Deputy Mayor, would you like to begin?
Sure. Uh, Heidi Turner, Jessica Ivy, Jimmy Mata, Josh Halpin, Paul Croon, Paul Gould, and Shelley Park.
Next is councilmember Garcia.
Annie Phillips, Benjamin Schlemmer, Jessica Ivy, Jimmy Mata, Paul Croon, Sam Ostrander, and Shelley Park.
Councilmember Mata? Sorry, could you turn your mic on, please?
All right, Heidi Turner, Jessica Ivy, uh, Josh Halpin, Paul Croon, uh, Croon, Croon, uh, Sam Oster, Oster Ander, and Shelley Park.
Councilmember Sidney Moore?
Annie Phillips, Benjamin Schlemmer, Heidi Turner, Jessica Ivy, uh, Jimmy Mata, Sam Ostrander, and Shelley Park.
Councilmember Sarah Moore?
Annie Phillips, Heidi Turner, Jimmy Mata, Paul Croon, Sam Ostrander, Shelley Park.
Councilmember Stephanie Mora?
Um, councilmem- er, sorry, Heidi, Jessica, Jimmy, Joshua, Paul Croon, Sam, and Shelley.
And Mayor Argon.
Turner, Ivy, Mata, Halpin, Croon, Ostrander, and Park.
Okay, thank you. Could I hear, uh, motions for individual positions? Let's start with position number one. Do I hear a motion to appoint, um, a candidate to position number one? Councilmember Jimmy Mata?
Motion to appoint, uh, I would choose the person, right?
Okay, motion to appoint Heidi Turner? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to appoint Heidi Turner to position one. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of appointing Heidi Turner, please raise your hand. That's councilmembers. Uh, Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it's a unanimous vote in favor of appointing Heidi Turner to position one. Do I have a motion to appoint a candidate to position two?
Motion to appoint Shelley Park.
Okay, moved in.
And it's position two.
Moved for Shelley Park to be appointed to position number two on the planning commission. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded to appoint Shelley Park. Any comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Shelley Park for position number two? Do I hear a motion to appoint for position number three? Councilmember Mora?
Move to appoint, uh, Jessica Ivy to position, uh, three?
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, moved and, moved by councilmember Moore, seconded by councilmember Mata to appoint Jessica Ivy to position number three. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote in favor of position number three. Position number four, do I have a motion? Councilmember Sidney Moore?
Move to appoint Paul Croon to, uh, position number four.
Moved for Paul Croon to be appointed to position number four. Any second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions, concerns? All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous approval of Paul Croon to be appointed to position number four. Do I hear a motion for position number five? Councilmember Mora?
Move to appoint Joshua Halpin to position number four.
Is there a second?
This is position number five?
Second that?
Yeah, sorry.
Moved and seconded to appoint Joshua Halpin to position number five on the planning commission. All those in favor? Oh, any, uh, questions, concerns, comments?
Sorry, who seconded that for the record?
Uh, councilmember Mata seconded.
Thank you.
All those in favor of appointing, what, sorry? Go ahead.
Um, just going by the total number of votes. Uh, I thought we were gonna keep it to the totals. Six, it seems like the recent candidate.
I was starting, yeah, okay, we can do that. What position was that?
Uh, my motion was to add Joshua Halpin.
Okay, well, she motioned in, and she motioned in for Joshua Halpin for position number five, so that's been moved and seconded. Um, that's on the floor. Um, any questions, comments, or concerns with Joshua Halpin?
Uh, my main comment is just that he didn't have the votes as to the other six, but I guess it's not in order, so, um, that's my main thing.
But I think just, you can, you can motion for anybody.
Okay, um, I guess I would like, say, anybody in substitution?
No, we can discuss this and do a vote on him because he's been moved and seconded for this position.
Okay.
Um, any question, any comments or questions, concerns? Okay, all those in favor of Joshua Halpin to the planning composition, position number five, please raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? The votes in favor were Mayor Argon, deputy mayor Schilling, councilmember Mata, councilmember Mora, of abstaining, councilmember Sarah Moore, councilmember Sidney Moore, councilmember Hugo Garcia. Is there a motion to fill position number six?
A motion to fill position number six with, uh, Jimmy Mata.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by councilmember Garcia, seconded by Sidney Moore, councilmember Sidney Moore to appoint Jimmy Mata to position number six. Any questions, comments, concerns? My only concern is that this will get confusing. Um, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
All abstaining? Okay, motion in favor was Mayor Sophia Argon, deputy mayor Kevin Schilling. Uh, all in favor again, please raise your hand. Uh, councilmember Garcia, councilmember Sidney Moore, Sarah Moore, and Stephanie Mora, uh, councilmember Jimmy Mata, um, abstaining. Uh, position number seven, councilmember Sidney Moore.
Move to appoint Sam Ostrander to position number seven.
Moved, is there a second for Sam Ostrander? Moved and seconded to appoint Sam.
Me seconding, sorry, I had my mic on.
What'd you say? Okay, um, moved and seconded to appoint Sam Ostrander to position number seven on the planning commission. Any concerns, comments, questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, or open up, unanimous approval for Sam Ostrander to position number seven. Okay. Uh, moving on to business agenda item B, just taken off the consent agenda. Uh, ordinance eight one eight. Uh, count, uh, city manager, would you like to say any words leading into our second discussion of this, third discussion of this?
We just, uh, if, uh, council would like additional information, uh, the city attorney and I are available to share any more information with you all.
Great, thank you, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
I move to adopt ordinance eight one eight.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt ordinance eight one eight. Um, any comments, questions, concerns? Councilmember Sidney Moore?
We've had a lot of conversation about this over many months. Um, I'm, I imagine most of you know how I feel about this. Um, but I think there's so much more left to be said. And I think that, um, it should be heard before we take this step. So, um, I'm gonna tell you something about my own experience. When I was seventeen, I was a victim of domestic violence, and as a result, I lost my home. I was homeless. I wasn't a drug addict, wasn't choosing to be unhoused. I was a victim. There are many, many people on the streets who have stories similar to mine and much worse. Those are some of the people we are talking about impacting with this legislation. I bring this up because we've heard so many stories from people who have faced homelessness, even our own council members who have experienced with it. And we've heard from a lot of people who have interaction with the homeless. These stories influence our opinions and our votes. But we've all had different experiences. And relying just on our own experiences to shape our opinion gives us a very limited scope and understanding of the world. Anecdotes have value, but our personal experience does not necessarily reflect the big picture. What we can use to gain broader perspective is data, information, and fact-based knowledge, such as that which experts are required to learn in their field. We have this data, we have this information, we have facts, and we have experts in the field of addressing homelessness, case managers, social workers, medical professionals, and their input and the data on the subject overwhelmingly inform us that forcibly displacing unhoused people without somewhere safe for them to go is incredibly harmful and dangerous to the unhoused. This information consistently shows criminalizing homelessness is not just harmful, but counterproductive, creating even more hardship and barriers for people to get out of homelessness and poverty. As leaders, we should listen to all voices across our community. But we should also prioritize actions based on facts, not take reactionary approaches. We should listen to the experts in the fields that are related to the subjects we're considering and take solution-driven approaches. The actions tonight do not pride, provide a solution. They don't get anybody off the streets. It's not compassionate to force people to disperse to even more dangerous areas where their caseworkers can't find them. And it is so painful to witness our council considering this right as the weather turns particularly nasty, knowing that it will keep getting worse. And as somebody who does outreach in the winter, I can tell you it can be really difficult to find the unhoused when it gets really bad and we want them in emergency shelters so they don't die from the cold and exposure. I do that. I go out there, I drive around until three or four o'clock in the morning sometimes finding people. And I keep finding them because as long as you keep looking, there are more there. If we don't know where they are, if they're not accessible to people who are trying to get them shelter when it becomes available or get them other support services, we can't offer them help. This is not compassion, it is cruelty. And if we're going to take this action, if our council and our community is going to take this action, we should be forced to face that and acknowledge it. I couldn't in good conscience, I, I, I couldn't support this. I can't. I don't think anybody should. I think we all have limited knowledge on this information, on this subject, but we should defer to those who are experts in this field. We should defer to the research of which there are, there's decades of research that shows us this is bad public policy and doesn't help anyone. It hurts them. So I will, uh, I will end that, uh, for now and ask if anybody else has any other comments to weigh in because I, I do value the input of our people and our council. Um, but there is significant value and importance in making data-driven approaches to public policy in this sense.
Any other council comments? Councilmember Jimmy Bottom?
I think a little bit of lived experience may not make you an expert. But I tell you, you know, uh, my parents came to this country looking for a better life for their children. And, you know, somewhere along the line, you know, I was the last individual to be part of child labor in Eastern Washington. Uh, my father battled, uh, drug addiction. His, uh, addiction was heroin. Then crystal mix started coming to the streets. Um, I tell you, it was very hard. I got to sleep in vans, what, waiting for them to get out of a, of a bar. Um, I was, I didn't have a dad, I had street dads. And you know what? I don't want those kids out there to have street dads that are involved on drugs. Um, I do believe we gotta do better at taking down criminal enterprises and, and, and drug dealers. And as a mayor of the city, the biggest issue we had here was gang violence. You know, several threats, as the chief can attest to it. You know, we, we got major problems on our streets right now. This is not the drugs that I grew up around, not the ones that my dad would use, marijuana, we knew it came from a plant. Heroin, we knew it came from the poppy seeds, and those that served in the military know that we had a major addiction here in the sixties. On top of that, you know, um, we went through methadone clinics. He went, and I gotta tell you, sometimes this is a hard conversation for me. As you can see, I express it. Because there was times when my father got locked up and was incarcerated, I mean, we did struggle. But we were struggling to figure out where he was at in the middle of the night. What trouble was he getting into? Was I gonna have to at eleven or twelve years old have to go get, get him out of the bars? And yes, I have some lived experience, and some of these, I gotta tell you, I, you know, they bother me. You know, I lost my dad at forty-eight here in Burian to a drug overdose. And on top of, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm really proud of my son getting his master's degree, my daughter going to foster business school. You know, but, but my mom taught me, she's a single mother, a single mother, working three jobs. And we go, we gotta get up in the morning, we got, we gotta work hard, man. You know, we gotta help, we gotta help our community, and that's why I got involved in politics. I wanna help my community. But there's definitely a problem here with this new drug. This is synthetic drugs. This is, and you know what? I'm waiting for the experts to tell us, okay, what are steps do we have to take? Uh, next, you know, I sit there and I see mothers crying because they lost their child to fentanyl. I see mothers crying because they lost their child to, uh, you know, uh, being depressed. You know, uh, today, yeah, I seconded the motion. I don't believe that what's happening on Anbaum is the way we need to operate a city. And I gotta tell you, you know, and I've talked to business, we have to have a conversation of what does Burian look like in the future? And I gotta tell you that, you know, there's a major divide on this issue. Now, you know, nobody has the answers. If they did, we wouldn't have what's going on on the West Coast. I read about what's going on, new policies that are being put throughout the cities. Not just Granite Pass or Boise, Idaho, but you got it going on in Arizona. There's a major divide of what do we do with these synthetic drugs just polluting our community? Look, uh, for me, I'm passionate, I'm sympathetic. I know how cold it is, I just heard the rain right now. But I do believe that we need to start investing in, inpatient care when it comes to mental health, illness, and also drug addiction. It's, it's not one thing, it's just not one, you gotta throw people in an encampment, that's just not, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that. And I know some of you strings feel strongly about that, I'm sorry. But I cannot, I have to go to sleep at night and rest with myself, and when I make policy out here, some people may be upset of it, but I, I know a family that lives in that trailer park. Those kids cannot play, they're, they're being held hostage. Those kids cannot play, they're, they're being held hostage in their own little trailer. I lived in a trailer, I never had a room. I lived on a couch. And I slept in a van when my parents were farm workers. We were, you know, i- is, is there racism in our country? Yes, there's still racism, we, we remember when we were called all sorts of different names, but there's also fear. You know, some of this stuff is being, being driven by fear, but at the same time, we definitely, look, I'm not blind, but I go out there. I go out to that site, you know, I said, somebody said, well, what you guys go out to, I go out there every morning, every night. Figure out what can we do different, where can we find the money? What can I as a, as somebody that sets policy that's supposed to be a councilman, supposed to protect the citizens of Burien, residents, and the undocumented people, and the people with mental health illness and with drug addiction, I tell you, there's not enough money. Million dollars is not enough money, we just said we need two hundred thousand dollars. We talked about this at the beginning of the year with our, let's take four hundred thousand dollars and let's go out there and tell the county, this is all we got in our checking account. Okay, that failed. Okay, we've been figuring out, what are we gonna be doing with properties, we don't have enough property. We, we're trying to work with the port, we try to work with the county, we try to work with the school district. We have one parking lot out here that's owned by a businessman. And you know what, I've said, well, is there anywhere else we can build this? Can we build like permanent, something permanent, DES, that, you know, look, there's some of you that don't like DES, I voted for it, yes, I did. I believe it's gonna help our community, because we have a responsibility, because we can't just throw our people and just throw them out, throw them out in other cities, but also, I also believe again, and I'm gonna state this, I think we need help from the federal government here in Burien, we need help from the state, uh, elected officials, and the county elected officials, we have a regional hospital that services the region. And we're getting shortchanged. We're not getting enough money to be able to help us in our community, specifically being twenty-four percent. Latinos, it's only twelve percent at the county, so we do have some challenges, and look, y'all, this whole thing about being an immigrant community, we've always been an immigrant community, if you look, if you've lived here for a long time, I've read your books, you had the Irish and the Italians, this used to be a, 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 a farmland out here. So look, this, this legislation to me, is it gonna fix it? No, is it gonna be a patch? Maybe so, is it gonna bring us together? Probably not. But I gotta tell you that this is not the last conversation we're gonna have, you know, because we are gonna have encampments moving around, and we need more housing. I mean, that's just what it boils down to, the question here is, who's paying for it? Because right now, I can tell you the major pain that we have in our community, inflation, gas prices, milk, eggs. Eggs and beans, for God's sakes. We could live off eggs and beans, I, you know, I don't, I can't tell you how many eggs I used to eat, because we didn't have enough money, but we definitely have a problem. And, uh, you know, I, well, how we're gonna fix it? I do take your ideas, I listen to you, I hear you. Most of the times it's screaming, it's not necessarily where are we supposed to, you know, get policies, you know, I, I, I know Dr. Edgar. I gotta tell you, you know, I read her, her letters, some of them I agree with, some of them I don't, but I appreciate it. And, and that's what I ask you, you know, look, we're all trying to build a community where we can all live here and thrive, we're all, we all live in one of the best countries in the world, we have, we have money, the question here is, how do we allocate it, and how do we, those that have and those that don't have, how do we bring that balance? And for this legislation here today, yes, I will be voting for it. And yes, I'll take the heat that comes from it, because that's why I ran for office. All right, and so at the end of the day, I wanna thank you for being here today and expressing your, um, your positions.
Are there other, other comments? Other comments, any other comments? For councilmember Sarah Moore?
I, I want, I wanna, um, echo my agreement for what many people have said, we need shelters, we need more mental health care. We need places for people to live, but there is a gap in time when those things don't exist and the people do. And during that gap, dispersing people is not going to solve the problem, it is going to exacerbate the problem for the people who are being dispersed. And wherever they land, it will be worse for them and for the people surrounding them, so I will, once again, till we have those things, support people staying together, and as councilmember Moore said, where we can find them.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thanks. I'm, I echo councilmember Moore's comments. Um, us. I voted in this in June, when I voted against Dog Park, and I literally said, this is just gonna move folks from this dog park lot to our residential neighborhoods, and I voted against that. The vote stands, I want to also just mention, uh, there's a thing called VAR in soccer, I'm a big soccer nerd. It's a video assisted replay, so all my comments are on record, and you can all look back at how I voted against the encampment being pushed to residential neighborhoods when we didn't have a temporary solution at the dog park. I am voting again now against this um, ban, because it's gonna do exactly the same thing, it's gonna disperse for folks to more neighborhoods. We do have an immediate option, a lot that we as a city own. We currently lease it on a thirty-day timeframe to a business in thirty days. And this is the same thing I mentioned in May and June, when I first made the, the assistance from the county public, saying we have a million dollars on the table, we have temporary shelters. Um, we have a lot, we could have temporarily used that lot in the last seven months in the core of our city, next to our downtown services, next to our, two blocks from the police center. And not have to subject our residential neighborhoods to what they've gone through the last six, seven months. We have that power. But we chose to not do that, and yet we're choosing to again put on a van that's only going to move folks to another part of the neighborhood, why not use the lot that we have temporarily while we figure out this other lot long-term? We have an option, I'll keep saying that. I brought it up. I voted against dispersing folks to the lot. I voted against the folks from the dog lot being pushed out. I voted against this ban, and the record stands on what I said last week, you can go up to the replay. Um, I will vote against this ban for that reason again.
Other comments?
I can do anything.
I know, one second, other, other first-time comments? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. My colleagues have so much wisdom in their words, and I.
Oh, sorry, getting cramped. Sorry, leg cramped, sorry.
You okay?
Yeah, good enough. Sorry, sorry, I apologize.
Um.
Go ahead, councilmember Moore.
Yeah. Before we move forward, and this conversation may or may not continue, um, with this council, I, I do wanna take time to recognize people in our community who are angry and scared, who are upset about encampments in their neighborhoods. Your opinions are valid, your experiences are valid too. You did not sign up to be crisis responders, and these are people in crisis. You are not equipped to handle their crisis, you shouldn't have to. That's why we have government to address a crisis. Our government here has failed to do that. We've had the opportunity, as councilmember Garcia just said, we've had the ability for a very long time. There are many, many cities who have sanctioned camps, you don't need the infrastructure to put a tiny home or a pallet shelter village up to open a sanctioned camp. And it could immediately get people out of our neighborhoods, out of downtown, wherever they are that you don't want them to be. We've always had that option, and we've continued to ignore that. Despite it being very, very successful in many areas. Places where people have safety, have oversight, have support, have structure. They are incredibly effective. And they keep people who are in crisis from falling on the shoulders of the neighbors around them who are not equipped. I hope that, moving forward, assuming this is going to pass, that our community will continue asking our council members to take action. That you will continue holding us accountable for what you don't wanna see in your community. But instead of pushing to criminalize people in crisis, I hope that you will push us to take solution-driven action that will solve this, because what's going to happen now is people will continue to be displaced throughout our community. And we know exactly what it looks like, because that has been the case for many, many years. This homelessness issue didn't come up when we had an encampment, we have had input from our community members for years about homeless in our alleyways, in our doorways, in yards, in parks, wherever it may be, we know what that looks like. So we can go back to that. Nothing gets solved unless you push for us to take action for a real solution. I, I would ask my councilmembers to please reconsider, think the writing's on the wall. They've made their choice, but you have power, please use it, please use it. Keep this from continuing, help people out of crisis, hold your electeds accountable. Don't push this off into somebody else's neighborhood, because if you don't like it, they're probably not going to either, they're probably not, you know, equipped to handle a crisis any more than you are. We need to treat this as a public health crisis like it is, and we're failing. Please, please make us do the right thing, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, just for the record, the voting on this and, um, uh, would mean it goes into a, yeah, it, it was just like on the consent agenda, if it was passed on the consent agenda. So all those in favor of, uh, approving, um, ordinance eight one eight, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
That's Mayor Aragon, Deputy Mayor Schilling, councilmember Jimmy Mata, councilmember Stephanie Mora, all those opposed. Councilmember Sarah Moore, Sidney Moore, and Hugo Garcia. All right, moving into the city planning calendar. All right, so any councilmembers have things, uh, councilmember Stephanie Mora? Count, sorry, Sarah Moore had her hand up first, councilmember Sarah Moore.
Uh, I have several, should I do one and then?
Yes, one at a time.
Okay, thanks, uh, the first one, I would like to add a discussion of more we love to the agenda in the contingent that the count, the city manager is preparing to move forward with an agreement, um, with her business. Regardless of the dollar amount of a contract, this is an enormous community interest and concern, and I think should be discussed.
Are there three thumbs for that discussion? You have three thumbs for that discussion item, uh, co- uh, city manager, do you have that?
I do, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other planning calendar items, coun- councilmember Mora?
During last week's discussion on ordinance eight one eight, councilmember Garcia made an inflammatory statement. He implied that those who support ordinance eight one eight and the discussion of pallet shelter placement share a white supremacist agenda. While I acknowledge there could be equity concerns related to the move, moving encampments into some areas, it's important to know that downtown Burien isn't a wealthy area. What downtown does have is the majority of our small businesses that contribute significantly to the city's retail sales tax revenue. Discussions of potential pallet shelters in Boulevard Park is the present option only due to the land being made available to us by the owner. Councilmember Garcia's past support for low-income housing projects in Boulevard Park like EcoThrive and Habitat for Humanity make his sudden change puzzling and necessitates clarification. Due to the deliberate, unfounded, and potentially damaging nature of councilmember Garcia's statement, I am requesting again that the council reconsider his censure, thank you. Do I have any councilmembers who support censuring councilmember Garcia?
Are there any hands up, any thumbs up? Other councilmembers with planning calendar items? I have one, um, a discussion with Metro, we asked for a discussion with Metro potentially, have you, has there been correspondence with Metro about Ambon? And bus lanes to come back and discuss with them, please, audience?
We have reached out to Metro on a number of different issues, and we hope to get some confirmation from Metro on, uh, one, if they are interested in coming to council, and two, if they are going to provide a briefing on not just Ambon, but on other issues raised by councilmembers.
This was brought up to them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Other councilmembers, councilmember Sarah Moore?
Um, I attend the, oh? I attend the, um, airport committee meetings and was, um, the discussion came up there that we would like to request the FAA, um, brief the council on flight frequency, start and end time of flights, type of aircraft, and trend data used. Um, when planes are redirected and, um, the number of go-arounds or aborted landings.
Are there thumbs up for that? That was a request from the airport committee. You got thumbs up for that? Any other council requests? Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned at eight twenty-seven.
Thank you, staff.